Okay, if I could, we had a special session meeting starting at six o'clock. Like to have our city attorney report out on the special session.
Thank you, Mayor. We had two items that the city council dealt with in the six o'clock meeting. They were both described as item four on the agenda. One was a conference with labor negotiator and one was a discussion with the city attorney about one item of potential litigation. There were no reportable action items from either of those. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to adjourn the special session and I would now like to, okay, I now like to call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council for October 7, 2014 to order. Okay, just a reminder, anyone that's going to speak this evening and even council members, please be sure that you speak into the microphone. If you could speak into the microphone, the meetings are televised and we get feedback that sometimes if you're not speaking into the microphone, even though people here in the audience may hear you, people that are watching on TV can't hear what you're saying. So be sure to speak into the microphone as we do that. Okay, if we could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Present.
Councilmember Visgara?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Bloom?
Here. I'd like to ask Jerry Jambasian to lead us in the invocation here this evening.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity that we can have and come into this meeting tonight. Thank you for each person that is here tonight. Thank you for their interest in city government. Father, we just pray for each one of our council members that they would make decisions that would bring honor and glory to you and also to this city. So Father, thank you for this time together. Thank you for Temple City and what it represents. Thank you that it supplies the needs of its citizenry. So thank you again. In your name we pray. Amen.
And if I could ask Deputy Rick Adams from the Sheriff Department to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I know most of you are here for one item. So we're going to take the agenda a little bit out of order here. We're still going to do the presentations, which is next. And we will then hold the public comments and the consent calendar until after we have the hearing on the cell tower. So everybody else, if you're here for that item, you don't need to sit through other things on the agenda. So with that, we have, I believe, three presentations here this evening. The first one is Pet of the Month, and I believe Charlie and Diane Rios, who are volunteers at the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, are here to introduce us to Pet of the Month. Welcome. If you could speak into the microphone so the audience watching gets a shot at this little dog also.
Thank you very much. In case you don't know, we are the shelter that services Temple City. A lot of people don't know about us until their dog goes missing or their cat goes missing, but we are there and we have lots of animals that are looking for forever homes. This one is Raven. She's about six years old. She's a sweetheart, as you can see. She's very tame. We found out that she even likes to be around cats and she likes to be around other dogs. She's about 13 pounds. She's been with us for a while now and she likes to chase balls. If you throw a ball, throw it up in the air, she'll catch it in the air. So we have lots of little animals that you like. And if you can't come to our shelter, at least go online. We are online, San Gabriel Valley Humane Society online, and you could always see what animals we have there.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next we have the privilege, as you may or may not know, Temple City has an exchange program with a sister city that we have in Australia. And so we send some students down to Australia and then they send some students back to us. This evening, we're privileged to have these students from Australia that have come to our city. I believe they arrived here just a few days ago. And so they're all sitting here in red, so there they are. I'd like to ask Mitzi Franco and Jenny Vicario, who are involved in the Sister City program, to introduce the students. And please do so.
Thank you, Mayor Bloom, for having us here. And we really want to thank the council for your continued support with the group. I've been involved with it for ten year, about 10 years now, and the bond that we make with each group that comes is just amazing. When my son went about 10 years ago, we're still in contact with the family and subsequently every family that I've hosted. And I think the last count, my final count, was seven or eight students that I have hosted over the years. It's just a truly remarkable program, and we really thank you for your support. With that, as Mayor Bloom has said, in the summer, we send six students over there. And actually, we have one that did a phenomenal speech when he came back and thanked us, and we wanted to share it with you. So if I can ask Nathan Wong to come up first.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Nathan Wong. I'm a junior here at Temple City High School, and I am one of the six exchange students that went on the most recent trip to Australia. First off, I would like to thank everyone here for the opportunity of a lifetime. It's because of funding through the city that we were able to go on this exchange program, and I will always be grateful for your support in sending us over there. I've made many new friends and have shared tons of new memories in my experiences during my stay in Australia. I cherish every time, every second of my time abroad, and I fell in love with the people, places, and the things that we did there. I am also glad that I was able to meet all students from all over the world, from Kyoto, Japan, Tokyo, Paris, Toronto, Lincolnshire, England, and of course, Australia. I was so impacted by all of their stories and that they brought and their different views on the world. It is not every day that one can visit a war memorial with Japanese students, talk about poutine over smores, or discuss the World Cup with an Englishman. In the end, it was the stories that made this trip so memorable and the new experiences that we shared with one another. My favorite memory and perhaps the most profound was visiting the Cambrian War Memorial with the six Japanese students that traveled with us. Seeing their faces in the World War II exhibit and having them learn the atrocities that their countrymen had committed in the past spoke volumes to me. All the animosity that is associated with the Japanese and Pearl Harbor suddenly melted away, and I understood that no country's people are the same. The bonds that I have made with Yoshi and Chiori are the result of what I have learned, and that is something that I will take with me for the rest of my life. But there is something even more important when we take a step back and look at the experiences that we've had. The most important thing we can take from our trip is when we come home. Yes, coming home is a vital part in our exchange and travel experience. For me, returning to LA is where all the fun happens, school, sports, and friends, but not to mention the hives that broke out right after I got out of the shower. I actually thought I was allergic to Los Angeles. But the thing that I also realized was that everything that I had learned in Australia can now be applied to my own surroundings. My old life is now ripe for evaluation with the new eyes in which I see the world. I realize that the more that one travels, the more clearly you can see home and how much it means to you. It's a beautiful thing to see something familiar to you and in your new light, oftentimes because you've never seen it that way before. Home is now a place to fill your new experiences with and thus making it a little brighter corner of the world. The last thought that I would like to leave you with is that when you travel, have an open mind. The beauty of living in another world is that it challenges you to reevaluate your own. And as much as I miss Australia and however badly I want to go back, I'm glad to be home, but not for long because the next adventure is out there. Thank you.
As Australians come up here, I also wanted to mention that we do have an adult trip coming up in March of 2015, and that there's an information night on Monday, October 20th at 7:00 PM in the community room, and anybody is welcome.
What time is that on the 20th?
At 7:00 in the community room.
Okay.
Okay, now what everybody's waiting for is our Aussies here. And actually, they go home in nine days. It's like I was kind of going, my days are all kind of meshing together. But they've been rather busy for the last three weeks, and they're finishing up. There are about a week left that they have here. So with that...
Hello, I'm Sophie. I'm staying with the Allaretts. I went to Disneyland, and it was an amazing experience. I also visited Big Bear Lake with my family, and I experienced the cold weather, which was nice. And I thank you, Temple City Council, for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel. I'm staying with the Wise family, and I've been to Catalina Island, and it was just beautiful. And I would also like to thank you for the experience you have allowed me to have.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lachlan Werner from the exchange program. I'm staying with the Wong family, Nathan being one of them. I've got to experience lots of things in Southern California, from camping to seeing San Francisco with my host family. I got to see sites like the Golden Gate Bridge and Fisherman's Wharf. It really has been an amazing experience, and I'd like to thank you for it.
Hello, everyone. I'm Isolde Okamura-Jones, and I'm staying with the Shaw family, and Chilpa is just over there. Hi. Probably so far, I think my favorite thing has been Universal Studios, but that might just be because considering the temperature, I think any theme park where you're probably going to get wet on every ride is good deal.
Hi, I'm Isabella Newton, and I'm staying with the Thomason family. I'd just like to say thank you for this opportunity. It's been really amazing, and my favorite thing so far is going to San Diego Zoo.
Hi, I'm Bethany Brown. I'm staying with the Noe family. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. It's great. One of my favorite things to do would probably be school. You guys have a crazy amount of classes. But it's fun, it's good. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to ask the council members to come down at this point. We've got some, I believe, some gifts here. Okay.
On behalf of the Hope Spirituality Association, we'd like to present you with this gift. Thank you to your friends.
Thank you Mitzi and Jenny and all the adults and all the families that are hosting. You know, there's a lot of effort involved in this, so we thank you very much for all of that. Okay, we'll move on to the third item we have. It's the Youth Engaged Conference. I know our public Parks and Recreation Director, Kathy Burrows, is here to provide some information. Let me just give a little background. As you may know, we started a citizens academy two years ago, and we've got the third one coming up, with the goal in mind to help citizens such as yourself better understand how the city works, you know, all the different aspects of the city. And so Councilmember Mayor Protem Chavez has been working with a youth committee for a number of years here and trying to get them engaged so that they understand the civic responsibility and how cities work and, you know, as they grow and become, you know, adult citizens, that they have that understanding. So spinning out of that group, well, I'll turn it over to Kathy. I'm sure you're going to say all the good stuff, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very brief background on the youth committee for those that may not know about it. In 2009, the city council approved the concept of a youth committee, and the purpose was to get the youth of our community involved in city government. So in 2010, the first youth committee was appointed. Up until 2013, the committee served one-year terms, and we saw that there was a disconnect. We really weren't getting things accomplished on the youth committee. So in 2013, the council approved a revised policy that allowed the committee to serve two-year terms. And so this is the second year that we've had two-year terms. The youth committee has evolved over the last year or two. I'm sorry. Recently, we shifted the staff support for the youth committee from Parks and Recreation to Management Services. This was done to align the youth committee with more citywide policies and procedures. The youth committee is now focused on higher-level goals, and they're more involved in the bigger picture things instead of doing individual service-type projects. The role of the youth committee is to solicit youth input on issues that are important to the city. So as we mentioned, they're more substantive involvement. Some of the activities that the committee has been involved in since we refocused them. One of the things is they are required to regularly attend and report back on commission meetings. Each committee member is assigned to a commission, and they report back to their committee on what has been happening at the commission level. They also hosted, you may remember, at the Rosewood Boulevard grand opening, the scavenger hunt to introduce the public to new transportation services. And as the mayor mentioned, later this month, they will be hosting their next big event, the Youth Engaged Conference. Just a little bit of background on Youth Engage, and then I'm going to turn it over to one of our committee members. The committee has been working very closely with city staff to develop the Youth Engaged Conference. Wendy Chung, our management analyst, has provided staff support to the youth committee for the last year, year and a half, and has done an excellent job and is coordinating this effort. Part of the event is a City Hall 101 that will familiarize students with government operations. But, you know, we think the bigger purpose is to prepare our young people to become the next generation of innovative leaders. So to that end, the event will feature various speakers in cutting-edge professions to introduce students to new tools and approaches for tackling some age-old problems. For instance, those like civic engagement, project financing, technology, and emergency management. With government resources becoming fewer and fewer, but demands for public service increasing, it's important to have our young leaders get a head start on thinking outside the box. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Agnes Mock, one of our youth committee members. Agnes has been part of the working group that's been planning the event for about a year now, and she'll present more details on the conference and how to sign up for it. Agnes.
Good evening, council and members of the public. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Agnes Mock, and I'm here on behalf of the Temple City Youth Committee to provide some details concerning our Youth Engaged Conference. The event is October 23rd from 6:00 to 9:00 PM here in the council chambers and the civic area around Temple City Park. As Director Burrows mentioned, the Youth Engaged Conference promotes civic engagement and awareness among youth. It also features speakers in career fields that students might be interested in exploring, such as development, planning, and marketing. The conference includes a City Hall 101, which will also include a youth committee 101, and then it'll be followed by breakout sessions on topics that students have chosen based on their interests. We also are having a professional dinner that the students can talk to the speakers that we will be having, and it'll be catered by Chipotle, which will be opening up later in Temple City this month. Here's the basic conference schedule. We'll have a check-in starting at 5:30 PM. Since the event is being held on a regular youth committee night, we'll have a call to order at 6:00 PM, and then a welcome message, and I'll jump right into the City Hall 101 presented by staff to introduce students to how City Hall works, and then breakout sessions and dinner to follow. We're really excited for the set of speakers that will be participating in the event, including UCLA Spark, which will speak about crowdfunding for community projects; Metro's Public Relations Department, which will discuss how agencies using social media strategies to engage new writers; James Rojas, an artist who has traveled throughout the US to host unique urban planning workshops that integrate play and imagination; 66 Night Market to discuss entrepreneurship and how to host large-scale community events; Temple City Marketplace to talk about how to create a successful commercial plaza; a computer science engineer from Caltech who has worked with JPL and NASA to create programs for community engagement; and we just added a new speaker, Bike SGB, who will talk about their work helping plan a regional bike network and promoting education outreach; as well as the city's Public Safety Division that will also be presenting on community emergency response management. So, as you can tell, we are very excited for this event, and sign-ups are now open online. So if you know any Temple City residents or students ages 12 through 18, please tell them to register online at www.templecity.us/YouthEngage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This is very exciting. Yep, go ahead, Kathy.
Just to wrap up real quickly, we do want to get as many youth out to attend this event. We have notified the school district, and they have passed the word on at Oak Avenue and at the high school. However, there is a maximum limit, so please, if you're interested, you do need to register ahead of time online so we can plan appropriately and make sure we have enough dinner, enough food here. We're hoping to get about 75 to 100, so please go ahead and register online. If there are any questions, you can contact Wendy Chung, Management Services, or myself in Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay, thank you very much. This is going to be very exciting. That evening, there's this conference at 6:00, and we have a citizens, I believe, the second session of our citizens academy is at 7:30 that evening. So this will be a busy place in that evening. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, and I'd like to move to item eight on the agenda, which is the public hearing. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve a conditional use permit for the establishment of a wireless telecommunications facility at 9677 Longdon Avenue. And before I get started, I'd just like to remind everyone, we have a Mandarin Chinese translator in the back of the room, Lucy Liu, who is a neighborhood watch volunteer and one of our leaders. If anyone needs translation of staff's presentation or need their public comments translated to English, please see Marilyn in the lobby. There's a television out in the lobby, so, I mean, you can see everything going on if you're out in the lobby. But anyhow, if anyone needs that, that is available back there. Let me just go through how this will be, how this will play out here this evening. First, we will have a presentation by our staff. We will then have questions from the council members to staff. I will then open the public hearing, and during the public hearing, if you haven't signed up to speak, we're going to ask you to sign up. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes, and there's a timer right here. You can see it starts at 3:00 and it goes down. I would encourage, if you're saying something that someone has previously said, we don't necessarily need to hear this, you know, over and over again, the same types of things. This meeting is for us to get input from you and from staff, and for us to make a decision in the process. So in fairness to those that will be speaking, I'm going to ask that there be no booing, no clapping, no cheering, okay? Because many speakers coming up here, whatever side of the issue you're on, you're probably fairly nervous anyhow. I mean, this is not an environment that you get up and speak in. So we want it to be as inviting as we can for the people coming up here so that they feel comfortable coming up, making the presentations. Okay. Okay, just brought to my attention, Lucy, and if you want to say something and...
I'm loud.
No, come on up and use the microphone, please.
She's going to go pick up a telephone, and then the rest I was explaining as you were going.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Okay, let me just finish up the process. So we will then, we'll have the public hearing, and I will call each person up. Appreciate if you give your name and address when you begin speaking, and then you have up to three minutes to make your presentation to us. So I will go through all those that have asked to speak here. We will then close the public comments. Once that is over with, the council will have an opportunity at that time to discuss the situation among ourselves. There will then be a motion made by one of us on the council on what the decision will be. There will then be a vote taken. It'll be a roll call vote, which each council member either agreeing or disagreeing with whatever the motion is made. So that's the way the process will go. I, you know, appreciate your cooperation. I appreciate you being here. You know, I look forward to your cooperation as we go through this process. So with that, I'd like to ask the presentation from our Community Development Director, Michael Forbes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Hestie Liu is going to be making the presentation, but I just wanted to give a very brief introduction to the matter that's before you this evening. The reason that this is before you is that under the municipal code, all wireless telecommunications facilities require a conditional use permit, which are normally acted upon by the Planning Commission. In this case, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this project on July 22nd and voted to approve the project. Staff had recommended approval, and the Planning Commission's approval was based on the ability to make the required findings for approving a conditional use permit as provided in the municipal code. And that is the question that is before the council this evening, is whether or not those conditional use permit findings as provided in the code can be made as related to this project. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Liu for the presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable City Council. As you can see from this aerial photo, that the proposed telecommunications facility will be located on Temple Bath David property. The property is designated institutional and is surrounded by residential properties. The dot, little dot on the map, shows the exact location of the facility. The facility consists of a cell tower and an equipment cabinet. From the center of the cell tower, it is 79 feet to the westerly property line and 64 feet to the north property line and 45 feet to the easterly property line. This is a blow-up image for the leased area of the facility. The elevation plans submitted for the project... to make the required findings for approving a conditional use permit as provided in the municipal code, and that is the question that is before the council this evening, is whether or not those conditional use permit findings as provided in the code can be made as related to this project. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Liu for the presentation.
Okay.
Good evening, Honorable City Council. As you can see from this aerial photo, that the proposed telecommunications facility will be located on Temple Beth David property. The property is designated institutional and is surrounded by residential properties. The dot, little dot on the map, shows the exact location of the facility. The facility consists of a cell tower and an equipment cabinet. From the center of the cell tower, it is seventy-nine feet to the westerly property line, and sixty-four feet to the north property line, and forty-five feet to the easterly property line. This is a blow-up image for the leased area of the facility. The elevation plans submitted for the project shows that the cell tower will be fifty-nine feet tall, and antenna panels will be mounted at the level of fifty foot. The elevation plan also gave us the impression of the scale of the cell tower as compared to the twenty-four-feet building adjacent to it. These are the north and west elevation plans. And this is elevation plans from the south and from the east. The applicant also submitted photo simulations showing the scale of the cell tower, which will be camouflaged like eucalyptus trees, and you can see in the circle that is the proposed cell tower. And this view is from the position of the northeast, and the position looking at the site from the west. And this is directly from the south, and from the southeast.
Let me ask a real quick question. Is that, so is that a simulation then of the exact, what the tower is going to look like?
That is...
It's a simulation of that?
Simulation.
Okay.
If, if, remind me, the question is, now the trees that we see here in the simulation, is that the exact type of trees that will be used?
That is correct. And this photo shows a finished project AT&amp;T had in a different, another city.
And that's the tree they'll use?
That is exactly the same tree that will be used in the city. And some side photos, just to show the view existing without the cell tower. And the residential properties on the west, and multifamilies on the east. Multifamily across the street on the southeast, and the church on the southwest corner. This photo shows the exact location where the cell tower will be located. That small bush or small tree will be removed. And one of the existing storage shed will be replaced by the equipment cabinet, which is very similar to the size of the storage shed. That's the one that will be replaced.
Is the buil... Could you go back to that for a minute? Is the building north of that shed, is that part of the, the church?
Yes, it is a two-story church building along the, close to the north property line.
And the building behind it, as you're facing it, is that part of the church as well? Or is that a residential?
I believe that's the residential property, adjacent residential property.
The building, Tom, that you're referring to is actually the, what's used for the school.
So that's part of the church?
Yes.
Church property, yes.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a private residence.
No.
All right.
This photo just to show the existing big trees along the westerly property line, enclosing that open area on the church property, on the synagogue property. In response to the applicant's concerns, staff would like to provide the following clarifications. Health and safety impacts are under the exclusive purview of the Federal Communication Commission, and the city council may not consider health and safety issues. Aesthetics of the project. Staff finds that the tower will be camouflaged to imitate eucalyptus trees. The fifty-nine-foot height is comparable to other trees in the vicinity, and the facility would be placed between the two buildings, basically rendering the bottom of the facility invisible from the street. With regard to the impact on the property values, staff finds there is no study that addresses the property value impact in an objective manner, and the city council, in this case, can consider aesthetics of the facility and its impact. It should be noted that this is a second application that the applicant submitted to have the cell tower in town. In 2013, the city denied the first request, which is to propose a facility at the Temple City High School, and the Planning Commission denied the request based on the aesthetics of the project. With regard to the language barrier that the applicant was concerned, and staff finds that the public notices for both the Planning Commission as well as for the city council meeting, hearing, are in compliance with all state and city laws, and the city will can accommodate any translation need upon request. In concluding, staff recommend that the city council approve, uphold the Planning Commission decision, and approve the conditional use permit request. In the case that the city council finds that the aesthetic design of the project is not satisfactory, staff recommends that the city council remand the case to the Planning Commission for further exploration of alternative design for the project. And this is staff's presentation, and staff is ready for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, if I could just review, I think it's been up there, but I believe any potential health and safety impacts resulting from radio frequency is under the purview of the Federal Communication Commission and not under our purview to address, as long as this facility meets the requirements that the FCC provides. Is that correct?
That understanding is correct. And the staff also mentioned that in the PCSF report, and there is a condition in the Planning Commission resolution requiring the applicant to submit proof, if the project is approved, that their operation of the facility will comply with the FCC standards.
Okay, then, what we can do, the city council is limited to considering the aesthetics of the proposed facility, the need for the facility to provide wireless coverage, and the need for this location in relation to possible alternative locations. I believe that's, that's what, that's what we have, and that, with our jurisdiction and what we're here to do tonight. Is that correct?
Your understanding is correct.
Okay. Our city attorney is telling us that, and staff is telling us that. Okay, with that, are there any more questions from council members at this point? Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Why the eucalyptus tree? Is there, are there other, is there, are there other trees similar to that in the area, or is that just the way this company operates, they build eucalyptus trees?
Historically, there, historically, there are other choices or options, but when, such as a palm tree, or any other type of trees, but in this case, after reviewing the design and the density of the branches and leaves, staff finds this property is a better choice.
So it provides perhaps more coverage of the, of the mechanical parts, I guess?
Especially, especially the antenna panels will be obscured pretty good by the leaves and the branches being proposed.
I didn't see anything in your report regarding whether or not the city or anyone has gotten any complaints from customers of AT&amp;T regarding lack of coverage in that area. Was that looked at at all?
This question, staff would like to defer to the applicant to provide the details and why they need this facility at that location.
Okay, could we have a, I'm assuming, do we have any more questions, or would we like the presentation from the applicant?
I have one more.
Okay.
I know your staff indicated that they looked at marketability or the issues, but there were really no facts or anything that you could find that addressed whether or not the residential properties would be impacted from a financial standpoint. Is that true?
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, one other question for staff. You mentioned that the, this is a second submitted, or the first submitted was rejected by the Planning Commission for a location within the Temple City High School. Do you recall what kind of cell tower were they proposing in the first submitted?
The first submitted feature, the antennas would be mounted on a light stand in the Temple City High School athletic field.
So it was on, on a, on a, on a, an existing light standard that wasn't like camouflage as a tree or anything else?
Perhaps the applicant can verify on this one, that's what staff remembers.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you know where the next closest tower is to this one?
Perhaps the next door, the cell tower, just next to this building is the closest one.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said.
There is an AT&amp;T cell tower just in the parking lot outside this building.
Oh, okay, so the one outside this building is the closest to that one?
Yes, that belongs to AT&amp;T, staff believes.
That's the, that's the closest tower to the existing, to the proposed tower?
That's the result of staff's research.
Okay. That's an AT&amp;T tower here. I know some of the towers have multiple agencies or, yeah, providers, multiple providers on the tower, so, okay. Okay, any other questions from council members at this point? Okay, if we could hear from the applicant, please. Is the applicant here? Yeah, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Jerry Ambrose. I am here on behalf of AT&amp;T. There are also representatives from the temple that are here, should you have any, any questions of them. I want to thank staff for their presentation, and I heard a lot of questions about the how and why we came to this particular location, and I assume there will be a lot of questions about that, so I'd like to back up a little bit, kind of explain that more in detail. And Hestie has some, has some graphics that I'd like to run through, again, to explain how and why we came to this particular location. We've been at this for about eighteen months, so there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, so. Is there any way to blow that up? Okay, this is essentially a, let's call it a technical map of AT&amp;T's existing service in the area. You can see the, the roads that are, that are highlighted there. You see Rosemead and Longdon. The little red circles, those are existing AT&amp;T cell sites, and the one at the south end, that is, that's the city hall site outside here in the parking lot. The green areas are areas of what AT&amp;T considers reliable, you know, strong coverage. The areas in yellow or whitish are considered marginal coverage, and the lavender color are areas considered to be unreliable. You may get a signal sometime, you may not. It's completely unreliable, depending on the time of day, depending on how many users of the network, so. As you can see, there is a large swath of lavender color running through the general area of where the site is proposed, and if you think of the, the cell sites, you know, the name cell, operating kind of like a honeycomb, each of those, each cell tower is like the center of a honeycomb, and as you can see, there is essentially a hole, or what we call a gap, in the middle of all of those existing sites. And as you can also see, the Temple City High School there is highlighted, that's essentially in the center of all of the existing sites, and that was essentially the perfect site to fill in that gap and service. But because the Planning Commission denied that site, we had to find something that was as close as possible to that location to help fill the need within that particular area. If you could go to the next slide, please. It's somewhat hard to see, but this, this map shows the existing sites in green, and each of the little red dots, which you can probably see better from, from where you are, those are all of the alternative locations that we looked at. We looked at a total of seven. Because the area is primarily residential, each of those properties was either a school or a church. There's simply no other type of land use other than a home in the, in that coverage area. So looking at all, all seven of those locations, the only location that met most of the criteria that AT&amp;T needs is the Temple Beth David site. It generally meets the technical needs of the network, not as well as the high school, but it meets most of the objectives. We have an interested property owner. And lastly, we have a site in response to the denial for the high school, that we can screen or hide the facility very well, mostly from public view. A lot of the other locations are more exposed to the public, and with that denial of the other one, we really wanted to find a location where we could, you know, hide everything as much as possible. So if you go to the next graphic, this is a graphic after the site would be, would be installed, and as you can see, it fills up most of the, the coverage objective that was previously in the lavender color. Again, if that little red circle of the new site was moved a little bit northwest where the high school is, it would be more of a perfectly filled-in pattern, but that, that option was taken away. So that's how we became, came to that particular location, and more or less why we need a site in that, in that particular location. Now, the issue of aesthetics came up, and that, that is a primary issue that we're discussing. I have some photos of existing sites, and I want to show you a comparison of what we're proposing versus what you already have in your city, and again, what our project looks like.
May I ask, I have a question on the coverage. Maybe go back to the, yeah. So when you, when you are referring to the coverage here, and we can definitely see an improvement, are you talking about cellphone signal coverage, is 3G, 4G, and...
All of it.
All of it.
All of it combined, correct.
Okay. The fact that on your website, the coverage map that we can, you know, as consumer can really get to...
Right, right.
That doesn't really actually show the state.
It doesn't take into account the individual little parts of, of the whole area. It's sort of just a large-scale look at, at the, at the system.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm sorry, if you go to the next slide. Again, sticking to the idea of aesthetics, this is what your city currently has at Temple City High School. That's Verizon and T-Mobile. Those have been there quite a while, and I think anyone could say, you know, logically, those don't look that, that well. So that's been there for a long time. The next slide is a photo of what we, what we were proposing at Temple City High School, and essentially, it's the same thing that T-Mobile and Verizon have now. The antennas would be mounted to a replacement light pole, and we would have an equipment building along the frontage road. That's, that's the lowest part of, of the screen. There was really no way to hide all of those antennas in that particular view, and again, the Planning Commission felt it's just too exposed, and they, they denied that application. The next slide is, is right here in the parking lot. This is an older photo, it looks a little different, but essentially, it looks the same. You have a steel pole with a bunch of antennas hanging off of it, very, very open and very visible to the public. And there is only one company, AT&amp;T, on that tower. There are no other carriers currently. And then the last slide, again, for comparison purposes. I hope it's there. Did it make it? Oh, it didn't make it, okay, I'm sorry. The last slide was essentially what, what Hestie had already shown you, which is the photo sim of, of the eucalyptus tree. So if you line all those designs side by side, the eucalyptus tree is a far better, a far better look, and it's, and based on the conditions of the particular property, most of the project is hidden behind trees or behind buildings. And in our opinion, and the Planning Commission's opinion, the impact was minimal. I'm sure you wouldn't want to see something like that in, in that particular locate, in our particular location. So that's kind of a rundown of how, how we came to the particular site, the particular design. I think it's also important, it was an issue of property values were mentioned, I think it's important to note that the Planning Commission, in their approval, adopted a categorical exemption for SEQA, which essentially means the project is so small or so inconsequential that it doesn't even warrant assessing or considering environmental impacts. So I think that that's important. We would obviously ask that you uphold the Planning Commission's, Funding Commission's decision, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, so you just, you just addressed the issue, or started to address the issue of marketability, but then you went into environmental. I didn't, how is that, how do the two relate to one another?
I was just talking about, I was talking about impacts of the project on the neighborhood.
Okay, but that, from an environmental standpoint, but I thought you were talking about...
Well, I guess...
You brought up the issue of, of the market value. That, that's one of the issues that's been brought up. Does it affect the market value of the neighborhood?
Right, and I, and I think staff stated it very well, there are no independent, you know, studies that assess that issue. know, studies that, that assess that issue on, on a macro basis. I would say that our particular project, if you run down the list of typical impacts, you know, noise, odors, smoke, traffic, parking, none of that, the project has none of that. Once it's built, it's just there, and there, there's no other, no other types of impacts to the neighborhood.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was gonna just ask our city attorney, I, I thought somewhere in, in the presentation, I heard that you can't, or I read that you can't speculate on what the property value would be, you actually have to have some substantial evidence, so can you even, should the council even consider a concern about diminished property value?
I think, yeah, my impression of the council would have to make a finding, a very specific finding, saying that this particular project in this particular location has an adverse impact on property values, I'm not an attorney, but.
Right, that's why I asked our city attorney.
There's actually a case came out of Carlsbad Wireless Services of California versus City Carlsbad in 2003, it's never been overturned, never been modified, and it stands for the proposition that the city cannot base a denial upon property value diminishment that's based on a perception or fear of radio transmissions or radi, radiation. In addition, under California law, diminishment of property value has to be established by a licensed California appraiser, who does an appraisal and, and presented that, and I don't know if we're going to have that kind of evidence today, but you're very limited in terms of considering diminishment of property value, it has to relate back to either aesthetics, you have to fi, find in some way that if you even have evidence of property value, it's not related to a vague perceived fear, and it's not based on speculation, and then even if you do have something that is substantiated in the record that shows a diminishment in value or marketability, it has to relate back to either aesthetics or the fact that maybe this isn't the most reasonable location, in which case then we'd have to identify and articulate alternatives that would work.
Thank you.
Quick question for the, for the applicant, you saw earlier when, when staff was going through the slides, and I actually asked the question, was the picture depicted show the actual tree or the actual type of tree that you're using? Is that correct?
There is an example, an actual built example, that's in La Habra that, that she showed.
So that was?
It's coming back.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the type of tree that we're proposing for that location.
Can we have assurance that the foliage, branches, and everything is going to be as dense as this?
Yes, there's a density, there's a maximum density component, and that, that site has it, we, we can guarantee that.
So it'll be the maximum density you can get?
Yes.
Okay. Any issues of fallen leaves and things that might get blown off as time goes by with a tree like that?
No, the, the older ones had issues with that, where they had a bunch of segmented pieces tied together, so pieces would blow, they're, now they're all one piece, they're essentially one branch from the beginning, from where it connects out to the, to the end, so you won't have any leaves blowing off or anything like that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions at this point for, for Mr. Ambrose? Okay, if there are none, we will now go to the public hearing, I will open the, the public hearing. To begin with, I'd like to recognize that we received a, a letter from a Duncan Woo at ninety-six seventy-three Longdon Avenue shortly after noon today, and we all have a, have a copy of that, so we, we've read it, so we're, we're aware of that, that input. Okay, again, I'd just like to remind everybody, there's a three-minute limit, when you come up, I'll call your name, come up, please give us your name and address, and again, I'd just like to remind the audience, you know, this is an opportunity for them to make a presentation to us, this is not an opportunity for, for you to do, you know, booing or cheering or clapping or anything else, okay, so I'd appreciate that, in fairness to all the speakers that will be coming up here today.
Just a moment, traditionally, in a public hearing, we would now allow the individual who appealed, I don't know if that's Mr. Duncan Woo or another individual, to lead off the, the comments, and the, the appellant, just like the applicant, is allowed more than their three-minute time to, a reasonable time period to, to state their case, everybody else commenting would get, get three minutes.
Okay, I believe Robert Knox, I believe, was the, the appellant, the person that appealed, is that correct? Robert, would you like, like to come up, please?
Thank you, Mr. Attorney, for the extra time, I practiced to get three minutes down, so, and you also, all, some of these issues that you brought up have put a lot of holes in my argument, so it'll be even briefer. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Temple City Council members, ladies and gentlemen, let me put my glasses on here. My name is Robert Daniel Knox, I live at ninety-seven thirty-three Longdon Avenue, and I'm here to speak about the issue of the city's approval of installation of the new AT&amp;T cell tower at ninety-six seventy-seven Longdon Avenue. I live about forty yards from the proposed installation site, and I definitely feel impacted by this decision, and I am against the approval of the installation. The reasons for my disapproval are straightforward. Based on www.antennasearch.com, there already exists seventeen cell towers within one mile of this location, as well as the AT&amp;T, which you mentioned, the AT&amp;T cell tower site is outside this door, which is only six hundred yards from the newly proposed site. Additionally, according to the website, there are two hundred and twenty-three towers within a four-mile radius of our location. My question is, do we really, does this area really need so many towers without a check and balance? Because the cell companies don't want to piggyback, if they don't want to share towers, then we can expect to have many more towers in the near future, and this is because of their, their oncoming LTI phone technology demands, 4G, 5G, whatever it's going to be, it's going to require more cell towers. So, I don't think the people in our neighborhood want to see fake trees every time they turn their head. And secondly, on a more technicality issue, when I read the planning commission's report on this area, it was dictated in the initial report as a R3 zone, which now she declared it to be an institutional zone, I don't know the difference, I'm not a specialist at this, but I do know that we have a lot of small commercial availability with, with commercial zones available, that around here, that I'd like to know if it's really necessary to allow this installation to take place in an R3 zone or in a residential zone. That's kind of setting a precedent to me, that you're invading the R3 zone, and you're invading the, you're allowing these people to invade the residential zones with various types of issues, and what's going to be next? The transaction, I also want to make that the transaction of the cell tower between Temple Beth David and AT&amp;T, this is a commercial transaction. This is not a public utility transaction like we would put up a, a power line pole to serve the community, this is a personal business transaction, a commercial business transaction between two commercial entities, I don't think there's a zone for that transaction. The only benefit the installation has is between these two people, these two entities, I don't believe the public is going to benefit whatsoever. If you happen to sign up for an AT&amp;T cellphone coverage, maybe you will benefit somewhere. So I believe that we're, we're allowing the zoning rules to be altered just for these two people, these two companies, or these two businesses. In addition, in a smaller technicality, which the zoning commission can probably prove me right or wrong, obviously, clearly, the proposed tower is scheduled to be fifty-nine feet tall, in my research and looking up on the internet or whatever, the maximum allowable height of a structure, and believe me, this is not a tree, this is a structure, is thirty-five feet, unless a specific waiver is given by city council vote. So I want to know, did the city council already give them the waiver for a height extension over thirty-five feet? Lastly, the Supreme Court, as you said, has ruled against the subject of health in regard to governmental regulations, decisions on cell tower installations. Well, we all know about things like asbestos, lead paint, X-ray radiation, and how long it took for the government to catch up to the dangers of those things, so, I won't bring it up anymore, but I hope that someday we don't have a, a negative impact on that. If you haven't noticed, that I paid a lot of attention to cell towers since joining this issue, whether it's here in Los Angeles, whether it's in, on the way to Vegas, and I've never seen a single bird sitting on a cell tower antenna, nor a nest, so perhaps they know something we don't.
I'd ask you to, to start wrapping up.
Thank you, for my, for your, for my opportunity to speak here.
Okay, I appreciate your enthusiasm, as I asked in the beginning, let's keep this professional as we go through here, so, I, I did allow him a little more time than the three minutes, since he was the primary appellant on this thing, so we will, we will hold to the three minutes as we move forward here. Okay, the next speaker is Edison Shu. Okay, could you give us your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Edison Shu, and I live on ninety-six forty-six Longdon Avenue, Unit Eight, Temple City. Dear Mayor, room, Councilmember Sternquist, you, Chavez, and Viscara, thank you for conducting this public hearing, my family and I, we live on Longdon Avenue, across the street from the subject-proposed site. Per Temple City, City Code ninety-one F-11, for conditional use permit application, the applicant, AT&amp;T, has the burden of proof to show that the proposed use will not have adverse effect upon the use, enjoyment, or valuation of adjacent or neighboring properties or upon the public welfare. However, AT&amp;T has failed to show the proof that, number one, the resident's enjoyment would not be negatively affected, and number two, the property value would not be negatively affected. So this is their burden of proof, but they have not showed that. So therefore, you know, I'm requesting that the conditional use permit to be denied. First of all, at the public commission public hearing on July twenty-second, many residents have personally, have passionately told the planning commission, the AT&amp;T representative, and Temple Beth David's representative, that our enjoyment of living at this neighborhood will be negatively impacted by this proposed cell tower. Different reasons were given, such as perceived health risk, fear of property value going down, fear of tower falling down and catching fire, and causing neighborhood properties to cut, catch fire, and this is very real, because, you know, we experienced the strong winds a few years ago, and there were many trees that were knocked down, and also this being eyesore to the neighborhood. And this, all these concerns have negatively affected our enjoyment, as many, as many of us have experienced anxiety and has lost many nights' sleep, you know, I'm sure the city council is already aware of this, as we have already talked to some of you. Second, AT&amp;T has failed to show that adjacent or neighboring properties value will not negative, will not be negatively impacted. In fact, there are studies out there that show property values could decline.
Mr. Shu, you, you have another thirty seconds.
Okay, so there's the property thing, I'm sure some people would talk about that also, and, yeah, I just have a picture, I took a picture of my home, we have AT&amp;T cell tower, and AT&amp;T cell service, and we have excellent signal, and then this picture is the picture that shows the coverage of 4G LTE in that area, and there is no gap, you know, I don't have the technical stuff that AT&amp;T representative have.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay, next, I'd like to call up, okay, could I please, could you please refrain? Okay, next, I'd like to call up Duncan Woo, if he's here, I know you submitted a letter to us, do you wish to say anything different than you said in the letter, we've already reviewed your letter?
Well, you read.
Okay, give, give us your name and address, please?
Yeah, I would thank you, Mayor and Congressman, I mean, Councilman, to hear, to read my, submit those papers, but I will mention, again, if this tower is, if you're living close to the church, my house is a next, next door to the church.
What was your address again? You were ninety-six seventy-three?
Yes.
Okay.
If your, your house, my question is, if your house next, next door to the church, what do you think? Are, are you gonna allow the, the AT&amp;T build a tower there, because your property is gonna be reduced, because the house is our whole life to work on, our big investment in the house, and also this house is for our retirement, and the, those kind of big laws, who gonna cover this? If, if your house is beside the church, I don't think you absorb this loss, so how, how do I can do it? So this is a kind of, you force me to have, have to have a lawsuit. The second thing is, even, even you did a research or you say need a appraisal, but if we don't need appraisal, we can think about it, even we don't need appraisal, if a house is close to the tower, it's a, value is a going down, because nobody, nobody wanted this house, nobody, you know, to ask, when you sell the house, nobody will ask it, because the house is close to the, to, to the tower. So the church, they build a tower here, the church, the entity own the property, they don't live in there, they don't have to face, to face every day, face to the tower, so, but we do, all the neighbors are here, we do face to the tower every day, so that's my.
You, you have thirty seconds to finish up, please.
Okay, so that's my concern, we, we live in here, we live in the Temple City and the, for, for, for Mayor and Congressman, because election, we're entitled to trust you, so that's, we need a living in a more safe and, more safe and, more safe environment place, so that's a, that's my concern, and my, my question, I, I hope you reconsider to move this tower to, to, to our three area or business area, or public area.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Mr. Woo.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call next speaker up Vivian Chang, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and city council members.
Your, your name and address for the record.
My name is Vivian Chang, and I live at ninety-seven oh-two Longdon Avenue, which is about probably forty, fifty yards from where you proposed to put this tower. I just want to mention that I have lived at this address for twelve years now, I work long days, I work hard days, and one of the things that really is relaxing for me is to come home and go in my small patio in the backyard and watch the beautiful sunset, see the hummingbirds, that I have about two, three hummingbird feeders, I have beautiful hanging plants, one of the things that my husband and I enjoy is to see the stealth, the stealth bomber fly over, because that's right where they turn after the rose parade, so I enjoy these from my backyard, and one of the things that is obstructing that view now is this unsightly, unnatural eyesore, a fake tree, this huge fake tree that I know is there, it has caused a lot of stress in my life, I will drive to work every day looking at that, knowing that that is there, and it, it's a matter of, of opinion, I mean, AT&amp;T, of course, they're going to think it's, it's a beautiful tree, because they want to make money, but do you want to make money over our neighbors? We have over three hundred people that do not want this tower here, this is a residential area, and like I said, it's just, it's And like I said, it's just, it's caused a lot of stress in my life, just thinking that, that this is, is going to go up in, in our neighborhood, where we walk our children and we meet our neighbors and so forth. I have all of my neighbors, there's eight of us, I am the Vice President of our association, and all eight of us are just dreading, and are dreading this tower to go up here. And we're saying like, what, what is the end? I mean, I know money is an issue here, I get great reception from my house, I'm, it's only two, three blocks from the fire station here, it's another two blocks, I mean, are we, where is, where is this going to end? Are we going to say no to our neighbors, forget it, because money is more important? We don't care about your children, we don't care about your stressing out after a long day's work, and I can no longer enjoy these sunsets, because I'm looking at this fake tree? So I just urge you to please, please consider these people that have lived here in Temple City for a very long time, who live in beautiful neighborhoods, now that we have to see this, this fake tree that looks unnatural, it doesn't blow with the wind, like other trees.
Okay, could you, could you wrap up, please?
Yes. So again, it's, you know, what is the real need here, and when do we say stop? Do you want one at every corner? And you know, it is your opinion, you're just super quick, that real estate doesn't matter, and I know that you've looked at several things, but I've talked to three real estate agents in Arcadia-
Okay, could you, could you finish up, please?
-that say the first question people are asking is, is this house next to a cell tower? So you need to talk to a real estate agent to see what their customers are asking, and where they wanna live.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Chang.[713.82][713.82](APPLAUSE).
Can I ask a couple of questions? Can I, can I, there's a couple of clarifying questions, if you don't mind, Ms. Chang?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure I understand, the tree is not there yet, correct? Because you indicated that you're looking at the tree, you're not looking at the tree, correct?
It's not in the view.
All right, so, but it's not there, I just wanna make sure I understand, it's not there right now, though.
It is not, but it will be there.
And then you referred to some three hundred people, you picked up a document, I don't think that we have that, is there, is that a petition or something that you-
Yes, it's over-
Why don't you give it to the clerk?
Uh, do we have the original here?
Yes.
Let me give you the-
And, and if you don't mind coming back to the, we're a little bit out of order, I don't mean to have you walking around the place, so.
Please return to the microphone.
Please come back to the microphone.
So over three hundred.
Okay, could you give it to the clerk, and then if you could go to the microphone, and we could-
And also, you mentioned something about an association, what, what are you talking about, an association?
That is actually where I live, there is eight of us that live there, and I, I'm just very involved with our, our association, and I meet with the people where I live, so there are eight families there.
Are you using that term in a generic sense, it's not an entity that's been formed?
No, I'm just sharing that-
Okay, I just wanna make sure I did-
I'm speaking on behalf of our eight families.
Eight people, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if we could have Charlton Chen, I believe. Give us your name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, my name is Charlton Chen, and I live in nine seven two-nine Longdon Avenue, Temple City, and live in the association called, uh, Redwood Villa Village Association. Again, good evening, Mayor, Mr. Carl Broom, and Mayor Broomton, Mr. Tom Chavez, Council Member, Mr. Fernando Viscara, and Council Member, Mr. Vincent Yu, Council Member, Ms. Cynthia Sternquist, and the city staffs. I really appreciate that opportunity, I'm here to thank all of you to let us speak out our voice. We're here to ask you to stand out and be our voice. We need the city to grow, and we're behind you. I'm here to concern about the property value of adjacent to the synagogue church at nine six seven seven Longdon Avenue. If there will be a wireless tower, the neighborhood surrounding to nine six seven seven Longdon Avenue opposing the wireless tower in residential area. Building the wireless tower will affect the neighborhood's property value, lower home value is to lead the property tax receipts, which would be less revenue of the city. I'm the taxpayer like others living Temple City, I like Temple City, I love it. The Presos Institute of International Organization at ninety-one chapters has spotted the cell tower should decrease the value of the property, the range between two percent to twenty percent. California Real Estate, Real Estate Association, mandate the sellers and the licensees must disclose the material facts that affect the value or desirability of the property, because I'm the licensed real estate agent. AT&amp;T has not shown a significant gap in the service, AT&amp;T has not shown the problem, the problems with capacity. The survey by National Institute of the Science Law Public Policy indicates cell towers and antennas negatively impact interest in the real, real estate properties. Ninety-four percent of responders said nearby the cell tower or group of the antennas would negatively impact interest in the property or price they would be paying a la-
Okay, could you start wrapping up, please?
All right. I just said, wondering, is the AT&amp;T and the Jewish Tower, Jewish Temple, consider their adjacent neighbors, because the property values hugely pounded after rebuilding this, the tower in that locations, to the city council-
Okay, could you wrap up, please?
Yes. Try to, to the city councils and the mayors, try to be one of our neighbors here, to be Temple City citizen throughout our lives, we all appreciate that.
Has it come from that?
The city, Temple City can take steps to protect its residential neighborhoods, we need your voice.
Okay, I, I think we've got your, your points.
Okay.
Could you wrap up, please?
So please remember, we didn't vote AT&amp;T, but we vote you. Now it's time, can you support us? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, next is Radovan Dajkovic, did I get close?
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Radovan Dajkovic, I live in Temple City, right on Kaufman, below sixty-two sixteen North Kaufman Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
I am there for last forty, over forty-five years, that proves I love Temple City, and I do, I will do a lot of things for Temple City, I already approve it. Now, what I am against, I'm not gonna repeat it, all these gentlemen's here, they said something, I'm not gonna repeat it, but I don't like one thing, why they scrap it, we cannot discuss headwise, we cannot discuss property value, I don't think so it's fair. And then my point is, I urging you, Mayor, and you officers, to consider these people, does the vote to allow that property, to, to build that, you know, set all these people and all-
Could you try to speak into the microphone again?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We got the audience elsewhere that likes to hear the discussion.
What I'm saying, I think we should consider these people who are they oppose, why, why we have to make it disagreement in the city, bring a disagreement with some third party? That's all I, I have to say, and I thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think the Temple, Temple High School plays would love to have the applause that, that we're getting here. Okay, Slavka Dajkovic.
My name is Slavka Dajkovic, I live in sixty-two sixteen North Kaufman Avenue, Temple City. I live in, in this address for the last thirty-one years, and I still plan to live there for a long time, and retire there too. All these things about antenna bring big, big anxiety in my life, because I'm registered nurse, I working work, long hours, I'm on my feet for twelve hours, dealing with lives and deaths, and when I come home, I wanna sit in my front yard, relax, have a cup of coffee, relax, but this new antenna really bring lots of anxiety in my life. As you know, you all searched through the internet and Google, look about antenna, which kind of effect they have on health, even you said you don't consider that, I don't believe. Radiation, I know lots about radiation, and this is it, that's radiation, whether you, they said, you under, you consider or not, it's radiation, radiation is radiation. So my other things is, uh, this antenna, when they putting in residential area, it's crime against humanity. They should put this antenna in public, antennas in public, in a public property, not in the residential property, because, because of the health reason. Plus aesthetics, is not good to see it, that fake tree, and plus, that's it, it's, it's against my, my belief, and I don't think it's fair that the synagogue going to get money for this antenna, and we going to get cancer and leukemia and diseases and anxiety. I don't think that's a fair. And we all voted for you, Mr. Broom, Major, and all of you, we all voted for you, and order, and think that you're going to help us with these things, and not be against us, against this, we are all against, all those people are here against this antenna. So I hope you consider that, because next election, we wanna vote for you guys again.
Okay, thank you.
So considering that in my-
Could you wrap up, please?
Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, next speaker, if I could have Kenny Luong, I believe it is.
Hello, my name's Kenny Luong, and I live on nine seven two-five Longdon Avenue, the same block and street of the proposed AT&amp;T wireless tower. Okay. I just wanna share a couple of personal, you know, viewpoints, and the concerns related to it, from this tower, hitting on three, three of the concerns that I have, one is property value, second is the aesthetic appeal and view, and then third, the coverage aspect. In regards to property value, I've only been with Temple City for a year and a half, I recently purchased, and I've been happy ever since. It's a great city, great community, excellent school district, but had I known, if there had been a tower, honestly, I can say I would not have considered my house that I purchased right now. And that view is shared with others, so regardless if there's a study out there or not, there is, you know, feelings that would impact, so just simple supply, demand, econ, economics. In terms of the view, I'm the one that kind of littered the exhibits that you guys see before you. The first picture in Exhibit A is the view from my second story house. It's a great view, I see this every morning before I go to work, and I see it every night when I come back home. Obviously, the sun's gonna be slightly different, but it's a great view, it's relaxing to me, I love it. And then if there's gonna be a tower, and I just Googled the second picture of some examples, granted, the, the picture's different, that's gonna be proposed, but I live close enough where you can see the church there, I can see that it's fake. From the pictures, even from there, I can see that it's fake, and it's an eyesore, and something I would have to deal with every day and think about, and likewise for all the neighbors and everyone here. So that is another concern. Exhibit B, which is the coverage, I just pulled it from AT&amp;T's website, and it shows good coverage, and just as an example, my fiance, who, we live together and we're gonna plan to build a family, she has AT&amp;T service, and it's great, she's always on her phone. I actually sometime wish that it's not as good, so that she get off her phone, thank goodness, she's not here right now, she's still at work, but the cell phone reception is great, she never dropped a call, she has perfectly fine both data and voice, and that's what I was just trying to show here, pulling from their own website, unless they're misleading consumers. And the back is, is the same thing, but just enlarged, to show that it's covering a large area, not just the red dot, which is the proposed site. So just to wrap it up, there's other, there's been a lot of stress that's, you know, hit everyone. I'm not talking about health, in terms of radiation, that's debatable, but in terms of stress and our personal enjoyment and everything, I just want, you know, to express that and share my personal views and story of my short one and a half years here in Temple City. And I just wanna implore all of you to really consider, you know, our concerns, and, you know, just kind of represent us and be a voice for us to overturn this wireless tower. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, our, our timer clock went off, the shot clock took a rest there, so we'll, we'll be back on here for the next one. If I could have Gary Chen, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and all the city clerk, this is Gary Chen, living in six-two sixty Golden West Avenue, Temple City. Okay, I moved to Temple City for seven years ago, the reason I moved to here is because my wife passed away, and my neighbor passed away almost on the few years, and a few years, and just because of the cancer. Of course, the report might be say, well, the tower radiation not harmed the people, but we living next five hundred yard across the street on the San Gabriel Grove, that, they have a, a high voltage electric tower. Even they say it not damaged the brain or something, you know, but, but there is not such a report, because this kind of high tech is only on the market for something like ten years, something only, and there is not really have any evidence to prove it will harm the people. But my fear is already harm my heart, because I don't wanna die in Temple City. And second of all, I don't know why we need the tower, I don't know they really had estimate it necessary, as many people say, the message was very good, and there is a two hundred something tower within the four mile, I don't know we really need it, and a few months ago, San Marino fired lawsuit for almost one year to remove the tower from the San Marino High School District, and now our society is raising the hand to welcome the Serrano Tower to our society, to our city, I don't know why. And besides that, I'm a buyer, you don't have to estimate what the value will be reduced, if I'm a buyer, you are a buyer, will you buy the house next by a tower? I think the, the answer was very simple and quickly, you don't have to spend a lot of money to this kind of investment, and-
Okay, could you, could you wrap up, please?
Okay.
Thirty seconds.
My girls, when she was ten years old, she been win the reward for the fifty years anniversary banner, she was say, she would show her appreciation for this city, she say, this is a fifty years family, fifty years fun, fifty years friendship, and fifty years, a lot, and I don't want give her an empty- And I don't want give her an empty promise. I want you stand up for our voice. And, you know, I won't say the last words to AT&amp;T or even some other commercial tower go to our community. We have to say no with them, and let them get out our backyard. Because we don't have to pay for their benefit, as long as they point out this is a residential area. I don't think it's necessary for us to pay for their benefit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, if we could have Jim Yi, please. Jim Yi here. Jim Yi going once. Jim Yi going twice. Okay. I have a Lee, Lena Mata. Did, there was note here that you withdrew, do you wish to speak? Okay, what's her name? Please give us your name.
Hi, I'm Lena Mata, I live at sixty-two thirty-nine Golden West. So while I'm not immediately in the city, I'm still feel just as passionately about this case. I'm definitely in opposition against the cell tower being proposed on Longdon. I've been a resident of Temple City for over ten years, moving here just after marriage, and now raising three young kids under seven. So I'm discouraged by the construction of this tower, not only because of the hazards it poses to our health, but also because how it could diminish the enjoyment of our hometown. Every day, my kids and I walk past the proposed site on the way to school. Seeing this will be a constant reminder of how citizens in our town rose against us, and we weren't heard. I pride myself in living in a community that values its citizens and works to better the community. I see no real benefit for the cell tower to the citizens, but rather how it could alienate many of us, and how it already has alienated many of us, whom fear the decrease in our property values, and more importantly, what unknown harm it could do. Our city was named one of the nation's best to live and raise a family, and what a great honor, right? I fear this may road, if this cell tower is allowed, to be raised a mere few steps away from our elementary schools. If we allow fifty-nine cell foot tower now, does that open the doors to five more the next year, and twenty more in the years following? It's all of our civic responsibilities, and especially your city council members, as our representatives, to oppose that which unduly harms the welfare of our community and marketability of our city. We don't want Temple City to become an industrialized town which has no regard for its citizens' well-being. The negative effect can contribute to urban blight and deterioration of neighborhoods and school districts when residents want to move out and pull their children out, because they don't want to live near or walk by cell towers, or attend schools right in the vicinity. Perception is everything, so this perceived fear is all that's needed to create a negative environment. I also challenged the statement that was made earlier that there hasn't been any concrete studies on negative impact of the cell towers. On the contrary, the Appraisal Institute, which is the largest global professional membership organization for appraisers with ninety-one chapters throughout the world, educated its members that a cell tower would in fact cause a detrimental effect and decrease home values of up to twenty percent. There are a number of case studies that I can reference for you if you need or require for follow-up.
Okay, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you. You're quoting something from someone, an institute called Appraisal Institute?
Appraisal Institute.
And where is that located? Where, you just quoted it, where did you find it? Is that, what publication and what date? When was that actually stated?
I can look that up for you as a follow-up.
So you don't have any information?
I do, I do. Do you want me to use that time? I just wanted to conclude.
Well, yeah, I'd like to know where it's come from, because it's, you're quoting it as, as a basis for, and actually, it's the first time I've heard a basis for an effect on the fair market value, so it's, I think it's important to know where that came from.
Yep, let me look that up for you just a moment. I'm sorry, oh. The Appraisal Institute is a global corporation.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you want to take a few minutes and look that up, I can have the next speaker.
There are chapters, yeah, there are chapters in ninety-five area, so there's chapters all over the world.
No, I understand what it is, I just want to know when that statement was made. Was it made a month ago, was it made two years ago, three years ago? And under what context was it made? You're just making a bold statement, and it really is no basis for it.
No, I'm citing directly from their, from their site, so.
So this is on their website?
I'm not making a blow, yeah. I'm not making any grand statements, I'm citing and quoting directly from them.
So this is on their current website?
Yes, that's correct. Which is appraisalinstitute.org.
All right. Okay.
So in conclusion, putting cell towers near residential properties is simply bad business for everybody. It means decreased property values for homeowners, local businesses, it'll represent lower income for the realtors, and for the city, it'll result in decreased revenue because of lower property taxes, because of our lower property values. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Okay, if I could have Michael Leong.
Good evening, City Council, and good evening, Temple City neighbors.
Is that a cellphone going on?
Yes, cellphone. My name is Michael Leong, I live at six-four-zero-eight Barella Avenue, which is about one block north of the temple. It's interesting that there is already excellent coverage, so the, you know, the question is raised as to why we need to install this cellphone tower. It's also interesting that, as to why there are no warning signs on cell towers in residential neighborhoods. If you drive around in, in commercial, and especially industrial areas, and look for cell towers, and you drive up to the cell tower sites, you will see a lot of warning signs on these properties. And these warning signs that are usually posted will have warnings such as, "Radio frequency fields at this site may exceed FCC rules for human exposure." "Maintain safe distance from all antennas." "Do not stop in front of antennas." "All personnel should have electromagnetic energy awareness training." And this is a repeat, but it's maintaining minimum of three feet clearance from all antennas. So this is absolutely a health and safety issue. The FCC is saying that we cannot legally consider any harmful wireless signals, but that is not the same as saying that there is no harmful radiation. In closing, how do you define aesthetics? That is, anyone who sees a cell tower next door to the property, they will walk away from buying that house, that is aesthetics. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, if we could have Bruce Bertrand, I believe it is.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak here. I didn't know earlier today I was gonna be here, my wife asked me to be here. My name is Bruce Bertram. I'm representing Lynn Burkhardt, we were married three months and ten days ago, thank God.
And could I have your address, please?
And my address currently is one zero two four zero Freer Street, my new address in Temple City. I'm a resident of forty years. My wife is a resident of thirty years and has worked for twenty years for the Temple City Unified School District offices. And the reason I'm here is because she asked me to be here. She owns property at ninety-seven-ten Longdon Avenue, which is very close to the cell tower where it was located. And I ask her a lot of questions, well, why are you opposed to it? And the truth of the matter is, they said not to repeat myself, so I'm not gonna repeat what other people have said here. But I've, I'm a practical guy, I'm an old guy, I've been around this earth seventy years, and several questions were brought up. Number one, question that I see is, in all my life, I've never seen a fake cell tower tree look anything like a real tree, act like a real tree, or be a real tree. It isn't, it never will be, and so that's maybe a state of mind, but they don't look like trees, I'm sorry. Okay, number two, AT&amp;T is a for-profit organization. I believe Temple David is a not-for-profit organization. I happen to be attending a church in Temple City for the last forty years since I've been here, and we have been approached many times, because we have declining population in our church, to have a cell tower on our properties. We've declined, because we are a not-for-profit organization. We do not want to make a profit from a profit organization. And shame on AT&amp;T, taking advantage of churches for doing that. And the last thing I would say is, if this city council declined a cell tower in the perfect location, as I think it was described by the gentleman from AT&amp;T, what, eighteen months ago, or whenever it was, why, if it wasn't a good enough on public property, why is it now being placed on residential property, not public property? Why are we putting that tower on residential property? That's my question, thank you.
Okay. Okay, next speaker, if we could have Joyce Fang, please.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilman, this is Joyce. I live in ninety-eight forty-six Estrella Avenue. I believe many of us have already voiced our opinions, and I just briefly have like five simple points, you know. During the report, someone mentioned the health and safety issue may not. May not does not equal must not. This is regarding to public health. And, you know, public health also including mental health. And, you know, public opinion counts, you know. Okay, number two, during the report, you guys mentioned that there is no study it will affect the, you know, real estate value. No study doesn't mean no input. Number three, the camouflage is a different issue. I hope, you know, we don't get sidetracked from the landscaping, even though landscaping is important, but we are really concerned about health issue. And number four, this is residential area. We should not allow anything that's not related to residential thing to happen in this area. Otherwise, why we have the zoning difference? Number five, I just, you know, hope that the councilman and Mr. Mayor can stand up, you know, for the resident, and not just do things right, you know, but do the right thing, and that's it, thank you.
Okay, next speaker. Mr. and Mrs. Loon, sixty-three-twelve Oak Avenue. Please give us your name, I'm having trouble with it, but maybe you can clarify it for me.
Thank you, Paul, everybody, let me say something. This is Xiangni Luo from sixty-three-twelve Oakby Avenue. Actually, the future tower location now, it's also a, after school, my daughter Emily, she's studying over there. There are, I think about a hundred children is studying and playing right at the location, every day, every weekdays. So I don't want my, my child to study there. Actually, I'm an electrical engineering PhD, I'm working in the, you know, company on some analog receivers, transmitters, some like, something like that. If anybody tell me it's not harmful to humans' health, I don't believe it. I just don't want my child to go underneath the tower. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, those are all the speakers that have signed up, I believe. Is there anyone else who is asked to speak? Okay, Mary Kokayo.
Mary Kokayo, Temple City resident. A lot of people in the audience are really my neighbors on Golden West. I'm not speaking because I'm friends with them. But when I went to the planning commission, I was really surprised that they okayed this. For one thing, it's on, the first thing that came to my mind, it's right in the residential area. How many places that the towers will still be, and they were denied in the past. I live on Camelia, which is, you know, I'm on the dead end, so I'm not that far from there. But when I first went to the planning commission, I thought, why is it gonna be there? There's kids that go to school there. The people that are there, they go home, they don't live near there. And I would like to know how much they're getting paid. It's a profit for the, for the church or, it's a synagogue, so I don't know if you call it a church or not. But like, I know a lot of churches, like the man spoke, they turned this down. Why don't they put this where the police station is? I mean, that's a perfect place, there's no residence right there. You have to pick a place that's not residential. I couldn't believe they're putting this thing there, plus, there's kids that go to school there. They're gonna, and don't tell me there's no radiation from those places, because I've read about that. It's in the papers, it's not proven. Our cell phones, the way we use everything today, eventually, the way the kids use them, there's gonna be a lot of problems, it hasn't been, but I know we have to have the towers. If they have the towers, they can increase the, put one on there that's more powerful, or something like that. There has to be a better way than put it, if it was in my backyard, boy, I would fight you guys.
Okay, if there are no others, I guess, Mary, you were the wrap-up speaker here. What I'd like to do at this time is, is probably take a five-minute break, so we can stretch our legs a minute. Then I'd like to ask the applicant to come back and see if he wants to address any of these. I'm officially closing the public hearing at this point. So after we come back from the break, well, let's see, do I need to keep it open for the applicant? Yeah, okay, the hearing is still open until the applicant responds. We'll then close public hearing, and then we'll have a discussion and we'll come up with a vote. So let's take about five minutes to stretch our legs, and we'll be back. If we could call the meeting back to order, please? Okay, as I said before, we took the break, and I'd like to give the AT&amp;T representatives an opportunity, since they've heard the comments from everyone here, to give us any, to answer any of the questions, or, you know, anything else you'd like to give to the council at this point, so. So either Jerry or Shelley, I believe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Sally Adamo, and I am a project manager for AT&amp;T. Basically, I just wanna touch some of the things that, just explain why we're doing the site, because everybody's saying we don't need it. The cellphone services is no longer a plain old telephone service. We are now dealing with data, and if, as you can see, one of your speaker actually got on her phone to get on the internet to find out what exactly, you know, the, the sources of what she's doing. So there's really no, we're doing data more, and you can see... So there's really no, we're doing data more, and you can see when iPhone was introduced, there were about ten million, there were ten million that was sold immediately. Because we're doing more data than phone service, and that's the reason why we need it. There was a question that the connectivity offers actually empowers everyone to innovate, grow, create, and thrive. One of the, one of your speakers said that we need the city to grow. And like it or not, part of that is the service, the cellphone service. More and more people are opting for, to get rid of their landline and just use cellphone in their homes. We want Temple City to be one of the, as you said, this was voted to be one of the town or cities to best, to best to live in. And this is one of your speakers' comment. And basically, like I said, part of that is really growth. And we have more and more schools are opting for digital textbooks and blended learning. And so not only schools, but also businesses that needs, that needs cellphone services. And in fact, some services, and I know in one area, that if they don't have telephone or cellphone service, they move somewhere else. And so it goes both ways, that sometimes some people who are working from, more and more people are working from their home, and if they don't get a good cellphone service, then they opt not to buy the home. So that's just, it's, it's, so I just wanted to add.
Okay, if I could ask the audience, everyone was kind enough to listen to the speakers when they spoke, please give the speaker speaking now the same privilege.
And one of the, your speaker, of course, mentioned that the fear of tower falling and catching fire. And in fact, of course, you know, these towers are well-built. And in fact, even in areas where there are hurricanes, sometime, in most cases, the towers are the only one standing. So that's what I want to add to the comments, that my colleague here will be rebutting, I guess, some of the things that, and if you have any question.
Okay. Any questions for her at this point? Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
As AT&amp;T or to best of your knowledge, received any complaints from any of the local residents regarding coverage or lack of?
To my knowledge, I couldn't answer that. I know that we have our RF engineers who constantly studying the services in, in every locality, and there's a need as what we have in London Avenue, that there's a gap in service. And so we decided to propose a site in that area.
I would just like to ask regarding the coverage and the map that you showed us this evening. That coverage map is much different than the coverage map that AT&amp;T has on its website. And actually, I was looking at different carriers, and when I went online, I, there is a discrepancy. So I'm not really sure who provided this coverage map.
Are you asking about the discovery?
Yes, where the gaps are. It's different than what's on your website.
This was provided by our RF engineers. And like I said, they're constantly studying where a service is needed. And so that was what this coverage gap is. Now, when you look at the website, basically, what it's saying is that there is service there. And as you can see, there's the yellow and the green. You know, the green is actually where it's a full coverage and where you can make a call from inside a building. But the yellow is in transition, when you're in transit, and therefore, there's coverage there. It may not be the most optimal coverage, but there's coverage there. It is basically like looking at, what would you call it, like from afar, and you could see, you know.
Right, I understand that, but it does seem that the coverage on the website is different than the coverage provided this evening on this.
Right. Coverage on the website is basically looking from afar, and it doesn't give you the real specific need for its site. It's probably like looking at the wall of China. If you, if you look at it afar, it looks like it's a perfect wall. But then if you look at it closer, then there would be gaps in it. So that's, that's basically what.
Well, I do have one other question regarding information provided to the residents before the planning commission hearing. I know that AT&amp;T has reached out to other communities where there were concerns about cellphone towers being placed in a predominantly residential area like, as this is. And did you have any outreach meetings with the residents to, so that they could voice their concerns? I'm just curious if you took that extra step with, with them.
As far as I know, we didn't, you know, and we weren't required to do it, I guess.
Well, it's different between, you know, a requirement and what you would do just to, you know, answer any of the concerns that the residents would have.
Understand.
I would encourage you, moving forward, that that might be something that, it's already in practice with AT&amp;T, but they, they do that with, you know, the cities that they're working with.
Right.
And then, just one other question. I know that both Verizon and Sprint, because of the controversy from residents with cell towers going in in residential areas, have already partnered using the Edison light poles. And I know that they are smaller apparatuses that are attached to them, and so they need to have more of them, but they use the Edison poles. And I'm wondering, was that ever an option that you looked at for our city for coverage, for these gaps?
Yes, we always look at an alternative where, of course, the Edison poles are ready there, and if we can do it, we'll do that. But I, I'm not sure whether we have an Edison pole here that we can, we can.
You're pretty close, because on Temple City Boulevard, I would imagine, which is between the high school and the temple, there has to be poles there, right?
But, but basically, that's what, usually what we, what our choice first, and so.
I'm just saying that, that is an option.
It is a definite option.
It is a definite option. So I just would like the council to keep that in mind, that that is a definite option that could be pursued.
Right. And, and like I said, there were alternative site analysis on, that was part of the backup information that we gave to you. And there was no Edison poles in that. So that means that there was, wherever that Edison pole is, is probably not, will not cover what the need is. So.
But you don't know if they specifically looked at that.
My colleague here can, can explain to that.
Okay, that's all. Go ahead, we can go ahead.
Okay, did, do you have any other? Jerry Ambrose, did you have any other?
Yes, I just wanted to add a few things. There were a lot of questions about, why do you have to be in a residential area? And I've been doing this for about twenty years. And the last few years, about seventy or eighty, seventy to eighty percent of my work is in residential areas. The freeways and the highways were covered a long time ago. And now, as Sally said, majority of the demand for services for data, for the new technologies is coming from residential areas. About thirty percent of households rely solely on wireless. And the assumption is that as technology marches forward, more and more people in their households will have a demand for the, for the wireless services. So a lot of my projects are schools and churches and libraries and parks. And so that is where the demand is, and AT&amp;T and all of the other carriers have to go where the demand is. And if you, if you look at this map, you can see that the entire area is essentially residential dotted with schools and schools and churches. And as I said, and the gentleman mentioned, the high school was our ideal location, and we'd love to be there, but again, the city rejected our application. So we are forced to look at alternatives. And every alternative besides the school is, is not as ideal. So AT&amp;T is not getting a hundred percent of what they want. But this location gives them a high percentage of what they want, and the best is the best location to fill that service need. You had a question about the SCE poles. I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. Are you talking about the short, maybe twenty-foot light poles?
I'm not really sure what the height is of them. I just, in looking at information about cell towers and alternatives of where to put them, instead of putting them on residential areas, on churches, schools, that was one of the alternatives that both Sprint and Verizon has been working, and they've been using. It's at the Edison poles.
Yeah, and.
And light poles.
Yeah, two things. We've been locating on Edison towers, transmission towers, for years. That's very common, and obviously, that, that's an attractive asset for us, because the height is already there, and there would be no reason to reject our applications, because we're not adding any additional height. And it's a utility, sort of a combined utility use. In some uses, in some areas, small areas, they have used the small concrete Edison poles to cover very small areas. Again, they're usually about twenty, twenty-five feet high, and they can't get the full diversity. Technology speaking, they can only get a few antennas inside the pole. So to cover an area like this, they would need several of those poles. And they're going to be in people's front yards. You may have a different group of folks showing up, but the issues that they presented tonight will probably be the same. Why put it in front of our house? It'll be there. I mean, it'll look like a light pole, but there will be about a six-foot box on top of a light pole, and you'll know what it is. So this gives us the opportunity in one location that we feel is very well-hidden. The planning commission felt the same way, and it'll cover a large, a large area. Also wanted to point out that, just from a federal standpoint, the city attorney can speak to this, city can't generally, unreasonably prevent AT&amp;T from providing service to an area. So at some point, we can't keep chasing locations. At some point, we have to be allowed to go somewhere. And in this particular area, again, it's, it's all schools and it's all churches. So if it's, if we're forced to go to another church or another school, it may not be the same folks that are here tonight, but it may be a similar group will be near, near their area. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that at some point, we have to come to a decision of a spot that's acceptable.
Okay. Do you have other input?
That was it. Thank you.
Okay, any, before you leave, any, any questions for him from the council members? Okay, if that's the case, hearing no one else to speak, I will close the, close the public hearing at this point. We will now begin our deliberation, hopefully not too long, since we have most of our agenda to go through yet tonight. Okay, council member you, would you care to begin our discussion here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a very touchy subject. We understand your concerns, and many of us, many of you have reached out to us. And we have previously also have looked at other cell sites, and just like the gentleman here said, every site is a challenge, and none of, nobody wants a cell site next to you. But just to repeat the obvious, though, both, both the planning commission or the city council, we really cannot consider, however we might be personally agreeable with you, that there might be health impacts, but that's not something we can consider as a, as a body. The federal government had trumped us, had told us through the, through the legislation that that's not something that we, we can even consider. And as a matter of fact, perceptions of health impacts that might influence property, property buying decisions is not really something we can consider either. The, in terms of location, I think, I wish it would have been a different site, because this is actually quite close to residents. But where I really have more of an issue is the, the scale of the tree. It's one of the better-looking trees, and, you know, granted, I have to grant the applicant that it's a, it's an eucalyptus tree. We've done mono palms, we've done other trees before, but none of them actually look all that great. And in particular, it's really hard to hide the fact that there is a steel column, steel post inside the tree. If you look at a survey that the applicant has submitted, we have trees on the site that is eighteen feet tall, eighteen feet and a half, high palm tree. There's an existing twenty-eight feet palm tree and an existing thirty-foot palm tree. You know, but whereas this is gonna be sixty feet, it's gonna be twice as tall as any trees there is on the site. And also notice that it is located in a very, very narrow courtyard. I scaled it off the, off the, off the site, it's actually less than thirty feet wide. Whereas, we'll be packing in a equipment room, as well as a sixty-foot tall trees for intensive purposes. So I, I think aesthetically, we do have an issue there. It is a very tight site, packing in such a tree and equipment. So I think that I wish the, I know there are not a whole lot of choices around, you know, maybe, actually, personally, I would have less of an issue had it been a high school or somewhere park, where it's like wide-open space away from the residents. So I, I would be in support of maybe the applicant taking another look at a different location. Thank you.
I appreciate your enthusiasm. As I said before, I appreciate if you held it while we have our deliberations here. Biggest round of applause you've ever got, I think, isn't it?
I think that's the only one.
Okay, councilwoman Sternquist.
In, in regards to your statement about the, our responsibility with the federal laws and making sure that there is cellphone coverage or by the providers, I understand that, and yet, you know, that's, as a council person in a local municipality, that is a huge issue for me, because it definitely, this is a perfect example that shows the struggle between, you know, the federal regulations and what we as council members try to do in our local municipality. And it seems that what we do in local government is shrinking and shrinking every day. So I know that we can't look at this issue from a property value perspective, per se, without having some specific information and examples, and I think that would be very difficult to, to even pinpoint. And the other is the public health and, and safety. So I clearly understand that, but I can't say that I can sit up here and not be concerned about those issues. And be concerned about the, the health of, you know, the residents. And so I'm not going to refer to those things, because I know they, they're not going to be part of my decision. But I will say, from an aesthetic point of view, and that is something that we as council members can look to with this issue, is that one of our, if you look around in our community, especially after the windstorm, one of our, the things that, that we take such pride in is our tree-lined streets. And we did a huge tree inventory, so we could catalog the trees that we have, and, and they, this is an aesthetically beautiful city with real, live trees. And I think that that unique landscape of our city can be taken into the decision that. landscape of our city can be taken into the decision that we need to make this evening. And I think that our beautiful trees are one of our most valuable assets. And I just find it difficult to, amidst all these beautiful trees, is this big artificial tree that is not conducive to someone sitting out in their backyard and enjoying trees. I have not seen a cell tower tree that doesn't look like an artificial tree. I mean, there's a difference between a real Christmas tree and an artificial tree. Let's be honest. I mean, I tried it one year and my family was going to kick me out if I ever got an artificial tree again. So there is a definite, definite difference there. And I think that our community and neighborhoods, the, the visual concerns should be paramount in this decision and in the consideration of where, of the selection of the sites. And I just don't think this is the place for it. I think that we as your local representatives and you also, you do elect us, we need to write to our congresspeople and let them know that local government is where things happen and we represent you. And they need to stop taking away the things that are so instrumental to what democracy at the local level is about. So I would ask that maybe we go back. I personally don't know what happened with the Temple City site, but I don't think that was a bad site. So maybe we need to revisit that one. But anyway, those are my thoughts.
What is it about not clapping that's not understood?
Well, I, I guess anybody would speak the opposite way. They probably won't get the claps. Councilmember Viscara.
Well, I'm torn. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look at this as logically as possible. I've, I've heard the arguments dealing with the aesthetics and I understand the words. I'm not sure I have the exact same feelings because I have seen cell towers that fit in with, with surrounding shrubbery or other trees and that kind of thing. And I can think of some off of the ten that a friend of mine and I were looking at the other morning as we were driving to, to golf. And I said, George, that's a cell tower. No. Yes. And it blended right in with the other, and they were pine trees. It blended in very well. I just happened to spot it because I had my good glasses on. So I'm not sure I necessarily agree with, with the viewpoint that these things are necessarily ugly. They're not beautiful, but, but they, they look like a tree. The other thing that really has me torn though, and not sure where I'm going with it, is I do understand, I'm old, I mean, I'm old and I'm, I'm not as technologically proficient as I should be. And I'm finding out every day that as I discover how, how to get a couple of more apps onto my phone, that there's like a gazillion there that I don't know how to deal with, which tells me that things are continually evolving. And technologically, I, I, I understand the argument from AT&amp;T that they do need if not wider, more powerful or both coverage to, to, to support all the usage that, that we're, we're, we have going with, with our various devices. I have to think that, that there is some logic to, to what it is that they want to do in installing this pole, this pole. So that's kind of where I'm at. I lived in, in Temple City probably longer than anybody in this room. And so obviously I'm committed to the city. I try and take care of my house. I'm on the city council. I try and make sure other folks take care of their property and that our businesses take care of theirs. So I'm very sensitive to the city. And obviously, since I'm a multiple homeowner in Temple City, I'm very conscious of property values. That being said, I'm torn. I, I'm not exactly sure where, where I'm going with this thing. And I sympathize with, with some of your feelings. I'm not sure I share them all, but I, I, I do sympathize with it. So we'll see when we get to the vote. Thank you.
It's a kind of a weak, weak applause.
All right. We'll see where we go here.
Well, it's getting late and I know we've been talking about this. One of the nice things about speaking near the last is that to get the opportunity to hear your colleagues and much of what's been said so far, I do tend to agree with. You know, I, I don't really, I'm not here to paint AT&amp;T is the bad guy. I don't think anybody is out to do that. Their goal is to improve service. You know, one of the questions I wanted to ask of all the speakers, but I think I probably knew the answer is, do you have a cellphone? And do you have a computer? And I think the guess would be that most of you do. But being, but saying that however, I think what concerns me in this case is that, you know, by AT&amp;T's own admission, this site is not the ideal site. And even looking at the maps, even, even if a cell tower were to go in there, at least if I understood the maps correctly, there's still going to be a gap. Okay? So, you know, that, that is a true concern of mine. Also, and again, just to get to the point, I really don't believe the applicant has proved their case on necessity in this case. I have not heard from anyone here tonight, including AT&amp;T, that there has been complaints of service. And in fact, those who live in the area have said the service is fine. So, you know, to me that, I think that says a lot. I really believe that this case calls for another look to consider other locations. We know that there is already one ideal location. And, and again, why that was denied, I, I don't know. I, I, it never came to council. It, it, it stayed at the planning commission level and I'm sure they had good reasons for their denial. But, you know, there, that seems to be even according to the applicant, the ideal location. Aesthetics was not an issue. And then, and in this case, you know, my last concern is, is the aesthetics and, and the impact that I think that this will have on the neighborhood. And, and I'm not the one that's going to live there. I, I see pictures, but everyone here tonight who has spoken, they are the ones that are going to be looking at it. They're the ones that are going to be affected by the aesthetics. And, and I don't think any of us can really say with, 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 you know, good intentions that, that aesthetics do not affect the fair market value of property. They do. We all know that. And, and whether you perceive it or somebody else perceives it, you know, again, I'm not here to speculate as to whether, and again, I, I was trying to get information. There, there really wasn't any evidence that, that it affects the market, fair market value. I think at this point, it's fair, it's pretty speculative, but, but I think a good argument could be made one way or another. So that's all I have to say. That's because I was short.
You're standing between them and, and evening snack, right? First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I mean, what makes local government work is when you participate. You, whether you agree with all the decisions or not, you need to speak your voice. I mean, we're here, obviously there are many issues that we're trying to address. And so thi- this is not an easy job. And, you know, I don't mean to, to make that as an excuse, but we, you know, we do try to need to balance things. So I, I do want to thank you for coming out and for pretty well-respecting the no-claps.
They were going to win with that one.
Yeah, but that's fine. I guess where I'm torn here, I mean, the, the technology is moving forward. I mean, I, I can look out here now. I can see people using their devices while we're talking here. I, I know some of the coverage people are talking about. They say they got good coverage. You're probably getting good coverage from the tower that's just outside here because you're close enough to that area. So some of the area they're talking, that they're talking about is beyond where, where this tower can reach. So even though you may have good coverage, that doesn't necessarily mean, mean your neighbors do. It doesn't necessarily mean your kids, when they're going to visit their friends or that, they have good coverage. I mean, it's been said over and over. I mean, we're moving to technology. There's been discussion in, in, you know, some discussion in the city, you know, should we have Wi-Fi coverage for the entire city? I mean, everybody's going there. I mean, do we have it? So, you know, you, you can't deny the technology. And so, so it's there. So it's balancing. Everybody's saying, I want good coverage, but don't put it in my neighborhood. I mean, that's like saying, you know, take the trash away from me, but by George, don't, don't put a dump anywhere close to me. And so that's what we're dealing with. As far as the aesthetics, I drove around today, all sides of the site. There are quite a few big trees in that area. And I envisioned putting this one up there. And unless you were, you knew it was there and you were looking at it, I, I don't think you would necessarily pick it up. You know, the comment very, very early on, you know, the, the space shuttle flew by and you couldn't see it. There are a lot of trees there right now. I, some of the homes I was at there would never see that stuff. So, you know, that, that balances out. So I, I don't think that's a, a big factor. I do agree that, you know, it's been said that, that there's another site that would probably be the ideal site. And, you know, maybe we need to try to go back there and see if we can, see if we can make that one work. So those are my comments. And since I'm the one that said no applause, so please don't boo or applause at this point. Okay, at this point, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we uphold the appeal of the planning commission's decision and deny the condition use permit to establish the, the cell site at ninety-six seventy-seven London Avenue.
Second?
Wait a minute. Is that correct?
That's the motion.
Okay.
Say it again.
I'm sorry, could you restate that again, please? I'm sorry.
We uphold the appeal and deny the CUP condition use permit.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Everybody understand the motion?
You going to make a friendly amendment?
Well, I, I would just suggest that, and maybe the city attorney can be of some help here. I don't know that we're really upholding the appeal. What we're doing is we're reversing the planning commission's decision. Is that more semantics than anything?
I mean, that's what his motion is.
Yeah. It's the same outcome, but-
I do think that it is a question of semantics. I think the intent of the motion is to deny the CUP application.
Correct. Okay, if that's fine, then I'm okay.
Okay. Everyone understands?
That's the attorney and me coming out. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, as amended then.
Okay. Okay, can we ask the city clerk for a roll call, please?
Well, before you proceed with that, if I may?
Okay.
There was some discussion while we were, while, while we were talking about this that we perhaps encourage a, a revisit of, of previous sites. Do we want to add any of that to the motion?
Well, I don't know. I think that will be nice, but, but that's really not part of this condition use permit application. I don't know if that's-
Yeah, I, I think that would be up to the applicant.
You would have the alternative to remand this back to the planning commission if you required some additional analysis or some additional information or recommendations from the planning commission. But that's not what the motion is in front of the council right now.
Well, I can move to other motion, but the question really is that if you remand it back to the planning commission, it's really pertaining to this one application, not the one that they have applied before.
When a decision of the planning commission is appealed to the city council, the city council reviews it de novo, anew. And you can look at anything you want to. And so if you have issues with this, it's like you're hearing the CUP for the first time. You need to remand it back to the planning commission because you want that body to review additional items and act on it or to provide the council with a recommendation so that you can act on it. That's within your authority. For example, tonight, not only from the members of the council, but from the audience, I've heard a couple of elements. For example, there seems to be a question as to whether the fake eucalyptus tree is aesthetically appropriate, not only for the site, for the community, whether because of how it looks, whether the height is warranted. Is that needed in the area? Does it fit in with other trees? There has been no discussion or alternatives of other things. You've seen one tree tonight in front of you. You know, often you can have architectural elements and things like that as well. So that would be one possible thing you could send back to the planning commission. Hey, we want to see alternatives. And is this height warranted? Is this, is this warranted? Another thing is whether this is the best site. Now, that's been raised. You can have, the applicant has put on evidence that they have looked at several other alternative sites. They haven't ruled them out as infeasible. They've just said they're not ideal. Well, that's not exactly the standard. The standard is that they, they need to have, this site needs to provide better coverage or eliminate additional telecommunications facilities that other sites wouldn't. I don't know that you have that information. That would be something you could ask. In addition, the, the applicant does have to prove that they have a substantial gap in coverage. We have seen tonight, and you can go to the website, and I, I know we've, we've all had this little piece of information. AT&amp;T's own website shows that they have full coverage in the whole Southern California basin for everything. Voice, data, 4G, 3G, 2G. That seems to be inconsistent with the more technical diagrams that are included in the package. If the council wanted to, it's within your purview to investigate that further and ask for additional information. All of those things, one or all of them, you could send back to the planning commission for further review and study. Now, that wouldn't be a denial. That would just be, we're going to remand it back to look at those items. Or you, you can deny it.
If we send it back and remand, remand to the planning commission, could, could they look at the, the application that was, first application that was denied?
You can send it back to the, you can send it back to the planning commission with a request that they look at other sites. Now, the applicant, we can't force the applicant to take another site. And we certainly can't force the Temple City High School to now accept a wireless facility that they might have previously accepted and it's been off the, off the table. But that is something the planning commission can look at and staff can have a dialogue with about, with the applicant.
Okay, do you want to withdraw your initial motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I withdraw my initial motion.
Okay, are you willing to withdraw the second?
I, I'm just concerned if you withdraw it, then-
We'll make another motion.
Oh, you're going to make another one?
Well, or, well, somebody can make it.
Okay. Well, I, I just didn't want to leave the three hundred people who signed this petition in limbo, not knowing what we're going to do.
We won't.
Okay. Then I'll withdraw.
So the original motion has been withdrawn and the second has been withdrawn also. So we're now open for another motion.
Let me try. Make the motion that, is it the appeal, go back to the planning commission?
Just remand this?
For review, for further review. And that we direct them to, to explore either new or previously selected sites as a possible alternative? Am I covering it?
If you're asking me, yes. I would say not only do that, but also look at the evidence with regard to the need for a facility. Is there a substantial gap in coverage? And also look at the aesthetics- And also look at the aesthetics of whatever site and have, look at various alternatives.
All of that. We're trying to be Solomon-like here. So Peggy, have you got it?
Okay, could I have anyone here to second that motion?
No, no, we're keeping it alive. Well, let's clarify that.
Do you want to second it or not?
Before we second that, so, Mr. City Attorney, so it's really keeping this application alive, right? So, in other words, this application's not denied.
Correct.
It is going back to the planning commission for reconsideration and including consideration of an alternate site and others.
That is correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, ready for a vote?
One, one question before we do that. Eric, can we do all of that and deny it for the Longdon site?
That wouldn't be part of my motion. I wouldn't accept that.
Okay.
I don't, I, I think what I'm concerned about is that... What does that do for, you know, the residents who were here tonight? It just keeps them hanging pretty much?
It continues the deliberative process with regard to the application, yes. Now, you can express the council's displeasure with the existing site, which I think is already stated in the record. But this does keep the application open and it does give discretion back to the planning commission to look at this and make a decision.
Well, ma'am, I know there's been a motion and a second, but I, I would, since we're all talking about it, I think that that, that this current motion would basically have wasted the last three or four hours of our life.
Absolutely.
We, the earlier motion that was made, and I think, I think we were all fairly clear, at least the majority of us were all fairly clear, that we need to resolve this issue now as to this site. If the applicant wants to look at other locations, which I'm assuming they will, since if they feel there is a gap in the service, they're going to look for another location so that they can better serve their clients. That's up to them. I don't need, think that we need to accommodate that at this point in time.
We have a motion on the floor and it has been seconded, unless it wants to be withdrawn?
No.
Okay. And your motion again was to remand it back? Remand it back to the...
Remand it back to the planning commission. Have them reconsider and have them look at alternate sites. And, and my feeling is that there is a, minimally, a technological need for the service and it will grow as time goes on, and I don't want to kill it. I want to find a solution to it. If it, if it, at, at some point in time comes back to, it has to be at, at the site we've been talking about tonight, well then so be it. But we're not there yet.
Mr. Mayor, may I also explain why I second the motion? And I, I think it's only fair that, to the applicant also, that they have, they have invested a lot of effort in, and to provide service. We need to, 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 for them to be able to have, to, to be able to consider an alternate site without, including the original one, without having to file for another application. Cell phone service is, is really more, AT&amp;T is more than just a business. It's also a, a service that we also need to be cognizant of. I mean, all of us here have cell phones. I have three on me right now, including my iPad. I have four devices. They are wireless. I mean, more and more, and that's the reason why federal government had made the rule too, that more and more don't have, more and all of us don't have regular phone lines anymore. I mean, we're relying on the cell phone, wireless. But at the same time, I think we want to make it loud and clear too, is that we do not think that this is a, this is the right site for such an application.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Bloom, before you have the roll call, can I please have a rereading of the motion? I'm not really quite sure I understand what, what the final motion was since it was a combination of statements by our city attorney and council member Viscara. Can somebody please state the motion?
The city attorney was writing over there. I, I hope he got it done.
Now, I don't have the verbatim language that would be in the record. I can restate what I believe the motion to be.
Go ahead.
The motion was to remand consideration of this CUP back to the planning commission for further deliberations and action with regard to whether this is the appropriate site for location of the facility and whether there's others that would provide better, better coverage, whether or not the aesthetics on that site or other sites can be handled in a way that is more in tune with the community. I referenced the type of the tree and the height and whether we had architectural elements that could be used. And then to look at the evidence with regard to substantial gap in coverage and resolve the dispute between the AT&amp;T maps on the website and the maps that were presented as part of the package.
You're good with that?
Essentially, yeah.
You're good with that? You second it? Okay, roll, you understand it?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sternquist?
No.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
No.
Mayor Bloom?
Yes. Okay, this action has been remanded back to the planning commission. And I, I thank everyone for coming out and bearing with us this late. We will now move on to the rest of the agenda for this evening. Okay, we'll go back. We will now go to, I, I think I will hold public comments. I have one speaker. Is Rainbow Young still here from Air Quality?
I think she left. I don't see her.
Okay, Rainbow's left. Okay, we'll now go to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. Members of the city council or persons in the audience wish, wish to discuss any matter listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. I believe there are just a couple corrections that the city clerk wanted to make.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd like to pull item seven A three, special meeting minutes, for correction on the meeting start time. And also to correct that it should, the meeting minutes should reflect city manager Cook instead of interim city manager Berman. And also item seven E, attachment A relating to resolution for the election. On the, in the first sentence, it should be March third, two thousand fifteen, not two thousand fourteen, for the next general municipal election. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, with those corrections, I'm, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move it.
Then moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Consent calendar has been approved. I'd just like to make a note, one of, one of the items approved on the consent calendar is setting up for the March third, two thousand fifteen election for city council. As you probably were, there, there's three seats that will be available at that point. So what we approved tonight is starting that mechanism. The filing period begins on November third, or November tenth, I believe it is, and goes for a little over a month. So what we approved tonight is starting that process. Okay, we will now move to unfinished business. Item nine on the agenda. Item nine A is to authorize bid advertisement for demolition activities at fifty-eight hundred Temple City Boulevard. This is the mortuary property. And we have staff report, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Bloom and City Council. Again, tonight's item, this is just a continuance of a prior item discussed at the council level. Particularly back in August, the council had delayed a proposed site demolition of the mortuary property pending subsequent review of site reuse options. Simplified what that meant was that staff had proposed to just do a clean raise of the site and the council had asked if we could first look at what are some options for the reuse of the site so that we could look at cost measures to maybe make the demolition costs easier and to allow for better reuse of that property. Subsequently, on September second, two thousand fourteen, the council was, was presented with eleven reuse options for that site and they ultimately moved to approve interim scenario two B, which was essentially to remove the mortuary property from the site, re-landscape basically the mortuary building with some non-recreational landscaping along Workman and then reuse the existing parking lot for public parking for a similar use. With that being said, the bid package that is being requested for solicitation tonight, it looks at demolishing mainly the mortuary building, which is identified as number one on the screen, as well as to remove some rolling gates, some pilasters along Temple City Boulevard and remove a small wall that faces Workman. It's important to note that the existing trees along the southerly parkway or along Workman will stay in place. So with that being said, if the council approves staff's request tonight to move forward with the solicitation of demolition bids, we would start that solicitation next week. That would, that solicitation would take about four weeks to complete. We would open the demolition bids on November eighteen, award a contract on December sixteenth, and move forward in demolishing the building and some of the other improvements on site by February twenty-eighth. The February twenty-eighth dead date is conservative. Most likely, it should probably take no more than three weeks to do the demolition. So with that being said, tonight's requested action is to accept the bid package for demolition activities, which is provided as attachment C to your staff report and authorize the city manager through the city engineer to circulate the bid advertisement.
Okay, thank you. Are there any council questions? Okay, if there are no council questions, I'll open it for public comments. Anyone care to comment on this? Okay, we will close public comments. Any other additional comments from the council or I'll entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the plan's specification and estimate for the demolition of the former mortuary building at fifty-eight hundred Temple City Boulevard and authorize city manager to circulate the bid advertisement.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, this item has been approved. We now go to new business. Item A is a request for nominations to the board of the San Gabriel Valley, San Gabriel Basin Water Quality Authority, representing cities without prescriptive water pumping rights. I would like to pull this from the agenda today. Both people who have contacted us about nominating them have been nominated already. So we, we do have to vote for one of, whoever the candidates are. That will be coming to us, I think, in November, after the first of November. But at this point, there's no, no need for us to take action. I've talked to both of the people that approached us and told them that. So this item's been pulled. Okay, item B is the discussion on the city of Temple City's strategic plan. I hate to do it this late, but I think we want to keep moving on it. Can we do it quickly or was, would there be a desire to hold this until next meeting? Let's see.
Problem with that is that two of our council members are not going to be at the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's roll through it quickly.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is with much pleasure that we are to bring forward to you this strategic plan this evening. There's been a lot of hard work by our ad hoc committee, our standing committee, all of the council and staff. As you recall, over the last four years, the city council's identified goals for upcoming fiscal years to help dictate the budget priorities and the objectives for the city's annual budget. A lot has been accomplished as the city, the city's activities have been focused on tackling the completion of various studies, ensuring financial stability and forecasting improvement in community engagement and transparency. The definition of a strategic plan is an organization's process of defining its strategy or direction and making decisions and allocating its resources to pursue this strategy. Now that the city has adopted a number of plans, the strategic plan will be the framework that will continually guide the city's elected officials' decision-making and staff's work plan to execute recommendations of the various studies and improve city programs. The process of what, that we went through and where we are today, the city hosted two community outreach, outreach meetings approximately a year ago, one in November to gather input from key stakeholders, including Temple City Chamber of Commerce, the Unified School District, Neighborhood Watch, past and present city's citizen cadre members and members of the city's commission. Also, in December, the city had, had a general meeting and received input from residents and business owners in Temple City. Approximately forty-five participants attended each meeting. With the community input, the Strategic Planning Standing Committee, Mayor Bloom and Mayor Protem Chavez and staff have worked through the spring and summer creating the documented, creating the document that's presented here this evening. There's three state, there's three phases of our strategic plan. And the first is to adopt this document tonight. That really sets forth the, the strategic direction and where, in a very general sense, where the city will be going over, be going over the next twenty years. It identifies the city's mission and the city's vision. And it also outlines the city's values. Integrity, honest and trust, honest, transparent government, deserving of the public trust, respect and caring, consistently treating staff, residents and the business community well, best of class, recruit and appoint the best qualified candidates, leverage resources, utilize city staff and funding to obtain additional resources to meet the city's goals. Innovation and best practices, encourage creative thinking in finding techniques, processes, methods and materials to best meet the needs of the city and to be proactive and take action, anticipate community needs as well as external opportunities and threats to the city and to proactively address them. Out of this process, we, the city's put forth six strategic goals. Good governance, public health and safety, quality of life, sustainable infrastructure, economic development and citizen education and communication. The tools that staff will be utilizing to accomplish the goals in this strategic plan include the strategic planning process outlined in the document, long-term financial planning, priority-based budgeting and an updated general plan. Phase two, yet to come, that staff will be working on over the next couple months, will be our implementation strategy. The second phase or component, component will look over the next five to ten years to pull together all of the adopted studies into a comprehensive document. With a review of the strategic planning document this evening, an implementation plan that prioritizes executions and the schedule of city programs will be developed and brought forward to the city council and thereafter continuously evaluated. Phase three will encompass strategic funding and will include and will be addressed strategic funding with the annual budget process and the review of a five-year forecast in which the city will evaluate its progress and programs outlined in the implementation plan. Next steps, once again, the, once the strategic plan is reviewed, the city council and city manager and management staff will initiate phase two and three and work together to propose resources and schedule implementation of the following fourteen programs in the five-year work plan. I'm just showing the strategic, or the 14 master plans that have been accomplished over the last two to three years in which this plan will pull together the overall implementation plans of these plans and provide a roadmap for the next five years. So through the efforts of the city council, the ad hoc standing committee staff and the community, the framework for how the city will be conducting businesses is complete and documented in the strategic plan document for you this evening.
Mayor Bloom, if I can also just sum up, let me congratulate the work of staff, Tracy, Giselle, and working with the city council. It's their work that really pulled this plan together on the staffing side. The other element that this brings, and Ms. House did a great job of summarizing and giving a sense of what a strategic plan looks like. One other element that this provides us, even in the absence of developing a, a work plan that comes behind it, is that it provides staff and it provides me, as your appointed city manager, with a guidepost to say, if proposals come, issues come forward to the city council, city attorney, we have some sense of what you value and what you have as a sense of the overarching goals of the city. I know it can be a little bit ambiguous with that sense of what those goals are because those are big lofty goals, but you have to have those goals in order to move a community forward. But it does provide us with that sense, even when a work plan will change on a yearly basis through the budgetary process or through amendments to a general plan or other documents, we still have that sense, okay, we're not off base when we're coming to you and presenting with, to you X project, X idea, whatever that, that may be, to give, so we have, we're in concert with you as the council that we're bringing forward projects, ideas, and policies that are in concert and make some sense. So thank you to both Tracy and Giselle on the staffing side. This is, this is not my work, this is their work.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I know we, we went over it fairly fast tonight, but this is starting to pull together everything we've been doing for the last four or five years and put in, into a game plan that we can move forward on. A typical strategic plan is a document about that fact that you put on a shelf and we're not, most people don't even look at it again. We decided not to do that. We did this first strategic direction that we did here tonight, but then we'll come back in the next couple of months with a, I mean, some, some real heavy work on prioritizing. We've got these 14 programs all competing for stuff, but we, we felt it was our responsibility to provide some direction. And as the city manager said, I mean, that can change over time, but we felt it was our responsibility to, to pull everything together we know and move forward with this document. So I don't know if, Tom, you've been on the, the standing committee?
Well, I just again want to echo our city manager's comments that I think staff did a lot of beyond, above and beyond and helped pull this together. And I think through the direction of Mayor Bloom, you have what you see before you. And I, I feel it's a good, a good document and certainly any input by other council members certainly would be appreciated, but we've got at least a good working start, I believe.
Any other comments or questions from, from other council members?
Yep.
Okay, I will open for public comments. Anybody from the public here to comment at this point? Boy, if you hold these things late enough, you do all right, huh? Okay, I will close public comments. Okay, I will, if there are no more council comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Bloom, I would make a motion that we direct staff to finalize the strategic plan, schedule, schedule the adoption of the strategic plan at the next regular city council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, this item has been approved. We'll go to item 11 on the agenda. It's communication. There is none. Update from the city manager.
Other than the events that, or Mayor Bloom, other than the events that the community will be seeing, no further report tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Anybody have to report? We met with the Rosemead group. We're still dealing with wrapping up some issues on the Rosemead project. That was on, on the 3rd. I believe the school district. Since our last council meeting, we had two joint meetings. One was with the Chamber Board of Directors and the second one was with the Temple City Unified School District. Those were the last two Tuesdays. Strategic plan ad hoc obviously has met to get to where we are today. Okay, any others? Anybody have to report on anything? Okay. I guess city manager transition. We did meet and we're, we're setting up a meeting to meet with the city manager and basically identify his goals for the next six months. We've got a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, I believe. We're going to do that. Okay, item 14, council item separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Sternquist.
Just want to thank Director Burrows and her staff for the breast walk, breast cancer awareness walk they had. It was a really nice event and it was a nice day to be out there and walking, so thank you. Please pass that on to Debbie and the staff. That's it.
Okay. Councilmember Viscara.
About three meetings ago, I think, Councilmember Sternquist brought up the issue of the pop-ups. The, the, I noticed driving around town that even though we have an ordinance regulating those, they're all over the place and it, and the ordinance is not being followed. Is, is, are we, are we doing anything on those things? I mean, I can take you around and show you about 10 different locations where they're out of compliance, I think.
Our, our current enforcement on them is, is reactive only. We only do it in response to complaints. We're not proactive on it. And I, I checked with our, our code enforcement staff and we actually have only had two complaints so far on it this year, so it's not something that we're hearing a lot about from the community. But our code requirement, actually, they're only limited in the front yard setback.
Right.
So you can still have them in your side yard and your backyard, even if they're visible from the street. So it's only in the front yard setback.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Okay.
And, and that's perfectly fine, but they're, they're poking out. And I think they look tacky as, as heck.
Yeah, I mean, we, our, our current, our current policy is, is that we're only doing reactive enforcement.
Well, would I qualify as a complainant?
We could certainly revisit that, that policy.
I, I will say that sometime back, we decided to be not, to be proactive and not reactive and that's why we changed it to Community Preservation, the title. So if we can take a look at that more closely because it's everywhere now.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Would, would you like me to lodge complaint?
There's no need to do that, Councilmember Viscara. We've heard loud and clear, so we will, we will follow up accordingly.
Yes.
Okay, any other items?
It's getting late and this issue could, could go on for a while, but let me tell you what, what I'm thinking about and maybe we can think next meeting about some way to address it. I think the council protocols, I think it's time to review them. I'm, I wasn't fully in agreement with them when we instituted them and as time has gone on, I think they probably need to see how they've withstood the, the test of time. So I, I, I'm suggesting that we either bring them back for, for full council discussion or that we subcommittee the thing somehow. So I guess I would ask all of you to think about that and see if you have an interest in doing that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
So can we have a follow-up next meeting of some sort?
Yeah, I know the two of you are not going to be here at the next meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Do it, the meeting after that?
Yeah, have to wait a month.
Okay, first meeting in November?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, let me talk to, let me talk to Brian and have a discussion.
That's it.
Okay, Councilmember you.
Nothing to add.
Mayor Protem.
All right, just real quick, I think most of us know that our Temple City band is going to be participating in this year's Rose Parade, and we've got the good news today that two of our Temple City young women are also on the royal court. So a good shout out to Mackenzie Byers and Alicia Stoker for their accomplishments and perhaps one of them may become queen on October 20th, so it's a good.
That's two out of how many?
Seven. Two out of over 700.
And I understand it's been 10 years since we've had a princess.
Yeah, so we got two.
So we have two.
So it's very, very nice. Mackenzie, as you may recall, was one of our Australian Sister City ambassadors a couple of years ago and so, and just one last comment, you know, we, for, for a change, we heard from some of our youth today and I, I think it's fair to say that we have some really great young men and women in our community and, and they are getting more and more involved and taking more and more, more an interest in, in local city government and, and I think that's a good thing and, and, you know, hopefully those things will continue on. So I just want to congratulate those organizations, our, our youth committee and, and Director Burrows and Wendy Chung are doing a fantastic job with them and, and I thought Agnes did a fantastic job today talking about the upcoming youth engagement, so we're, city's in good hands, I guess you could say, but that's all.
Okay, just, just an update on, on these city meetings, even though here we are at 11 o'clock, but we've, we've sort of changed our strategy. Instead of having our closed sessions and our special studies after we have our regular meeting, we're, we're planning to, to hold those at 6 o'clock before the regular council meeting so that hopefully we can be a little more alert so, you know, at 11:30 at night, we're not sitting there going, I, I agree, whatever, you know, let's go home. So, so we're trying to do that. So tonight was the first night we did that. We had our, our closed session before that and so we will continue to do that. Some will be closed sessions, some may be study sessions, so.
And we still went to Lee Lovin.
I know, I know, we still went, yeah, whatever. Anyhow, I, I think that will be a, a change that will, will help us be a little more efficient. We don't need to, as we, we used to keep some highly paid people sitting in the audience here waiting to meet later in the evening, so we've taken care of that issue, so. Okay, item 15, reimbursement of expenses of city officials for conduct of city business and for city payment of conference expenditures. Those are listed. We will now recess to the successor agency, to the Temple City Redevelopment Agency meeting. Could we call that meeting to order? Could we have a roll call, please?
Agency member Sternquist?
Present.
Agency member Viscara?
Here.
Agency member you?
Here.
Vice Chair Chavez?
Here.
Chairman Bloom?
Here. Consent calendar, all items can be approved with a single motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the consent item has been approved. Done it, finished business, there is none. New business, there is none. Communication, there is none. Public comments? Anybody care to comment? Okay, we will close public comments. Update from the executive director, our agency council, there is none. Matters from agency members, there is none. Closed session, we have none. We are now adjourned. We are convening back as the full council. We will now go to item 17, which is actions taken by city on successor agency. And we essentially approve the consent calendar. Item 18, additional public comments and items not listed on the agenda. Jerry.
At 11 o'clock at night, I feel about as welcome as a shark at a swimming party, but I was thoroughly impressed by Tracy House's presentation tonight on the strategic plan and, and I'm just in awe of it. And I guess the five people that need to take ownership of it and sell it to us and promote it and guide it through, two of you are not going to be here at the next meeting. So is there an urgency to do this? Because I think it would really bode well to have all five of you here to approve it. That's my only comment.
Well, it's, it'd be up for next, if you want to hold it over for one more meeting, it'd be the two of you. Is there any need to do that or do you have any concern with it? If you don't have any concern with it?
I don't have any concern with it.
No, I, I would approve it.
Okay. All right, so you have no objection?
You have an aye vote.
You have an aye vote?
Yeah.
You have an aye vote? All right. All right, we'll, we'll keep it there. I appreciate your comment, but I, I think there's been enough, we, we've seen this enough and worked through it enough where I think we're all pretty, pretty familiar with it. Okay, any other comments from the audience? Okay, I will close public comments, closed session. We already reported out on a closed session and we are adjourned.